The Cupertino City Council, Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow. Uh, Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
I'm here too, sorry.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Chow as well.
Great, so we have no ceremonial matters, um, or postponements, um, actually, is this, is this a good time to read the present, the, uh, statement regarding, um?
Mr. Mayor, actually, we do have a postponement really quick.
Oh, that's true, we do have a postponement, um, go ahead.
Uh, so the public hearing for consideration of the development proposal for the Oaks has been continued to a date in certain, and the item will be re-noticed.
Great, uh, let me give the closed session report from, uh, June sec-, uh, from Friday, May 29th. We had conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1 regarding pending litigation Valco Property Owner LLC versus City of Cupertino, Santa Clara County Superior Court case number 19CD355457, 2019 Valco General Plan and Zoning Amendments. Counsel discussed with legal counsel this pending litigation, for which discussion and open session would prejudice the city in the litigation. No reportable action was taken. Councilmember Chow did not attend the discussions because she has recused herself from this litigation out of an abundance of caution due to the proximity of her home to the property line of the Valco site. Thank you. Um, next, we are on to, uh, oral communicate, uh, before we do, oh, I'll do this after oral, we're on to oral communications now.
Mr. Mayor, during oral communications, I ask that you call on, um, Captain Sh-, Captain Urina to make some remarks regarding what you'll probably be making a statement about.
Right, um, maybe I should make my statement now, is that appropriate, Madam City Clerk, or should I wait for reports by council and staff?
I believe that's, that's fine, uh, I made a city attorney on that.
You could reorder the agenda items, or you could wait until.
Oh, I'll just wait, yeah, let's not reorder them, okay, so I will open oral communications, um, each person has three minutes. Do we have anything that was submitted by email, Madam City Clerk, that you need to read?
No, Mr. Mayor, I see nothing.
Okay, so we will open oral communications, anyone that wishes to speak, raise their hand, I see six hands raised. You'll each get three minutes, um.
Is Captain Urina amongst them?
Captain Urina is not amongst them, unless he is phone number 6610, which I don't think so.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait for him to attend then.
And he's not, he's not listed as a, is he on the list as a panelist here? No.
I don't see him, I'll, I'll text him.
Okay, yeah, text him to call in, and then he can go, um, so first, we have Connie Cunningham, I will allow you to talk, I'll unmute you, you need to also.
He's 6610, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, Connie, hold on for a second, let's have the captain go first, um, welcome, welcome, Captain Urina.
Good evening, Mayor Scharf and members of the council. I'm Captain Richard Urina with the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office in charge of law enforcement services in the city of Cupertino. I'm calling you today to inform you that we recently received information of a planned assembly in front of our substation here in Cupertino. This is to take place on Saturday, June 6th. Uh, we have not received any information of a planned assembly anywhere else in the city, however, that may certainly change in the next few days. I'm working closely with city manager Deb Fang to ensure that our community is safe while allowing people to communicate their message. We have mobilized many resources in the event that they're needed, but honestly, my hope is that they will not be needed. It is our goal to allow people to peacefully assemble and communicate their message, so long as it does not jeopardize the safety and security of everyone involved. I will add that the sheriff's office remains committed to protecting people during the assembly, so that their message is heard aloud and clear, and I thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, thank you, uh, next, we will move on to Connie Cunningham, welcome Connie.
Oh, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and city manager, I thank you for this time. Um, I'm going to send to, I did send to, um, the city clerk, a, um, a, excuse me, a link that I would like her to show, and I'm also sending a copy of what I'm going to say now, but that's for your record, I would like to present it myself. Um, and I, what I wanted to talk to you about was an article that I read with interest, uh, June 1st in the San Jose Mercury. Uh, it was entitled, um, "Encampments on Wolf 280," written by Marissa Kendall. The encampments really bring homelessness to the attention of everyone because of their location. And I just asked you to follow the link, uh, to view that article, you don't have to show the whole article, just the link, so that people who do not get the, um, who do not get the Mercury News, they would be able to look it up on their computers. Thank you, thank you, Kirsten. Uh, I was very hopeful when she wrote that officials are writing a homelessness policy to provide guidance in dealing with encampments. She also wrote that a city representative had written to her, emailed her, that the situation is obviously becoming more acute, these two areas are growing in size, and the occupants are living in health, unhealthy conditions. The goal is to provide them with a sustainable place to live. That statement holds out hope that the city will be looking towards solutions that we can implement to assist our Cupertino unhoused residents, even when the county cannot do so because of their funding. I was pleased to read that the city will be establishing a plan with that goal of a sustainable place to live. This is a complicated problem, but with the creative minds and resources available in Cupertino, I believe that a good plan can be written and also implemented. Here are at least eight things I would like to see in this plan. Number one, and most importantly, that our mayor will reach out and speak with the unhoused residents. Find out from them what they need in order to move. We have 159 unhoused residents with the last point in time census. It is possible to know each one and what they need by name. The journalist, Marissa Kendall, spoke to a man, Kent Brown, who lives in the encampment. As our current mayor, Mayor Scharf, could demonstrate how housed residents can talk to unhoused residents with clear-eyed compassion. He already shows compassion to citizens who speak before the council at every meeting. For example, I've seen him speak to people with problems like weed abatement that require intervention by the council, and I've seen him speak with compassion for housed residents who are upset about bike pit trails. Each one is an individual, each one is addressed by name. The mayor could begin by using the term "unhoused residents" instead of the word homeless.
Five seconds.
Um, okay, I have eight other things, I sent them in, I just want to finish this one piece, I think it's so important. The term clearly recognizes he's talking to a person when you say "unhoused resident." The second leaves the impression that you're talking about some other person, and unintentionally, it leaves the impression that the homeless people are different from us. This COVID-19 pandemic has made it so clear. Thousands of people who are just like us, who are housed, they have cars, they have food, they have all the things to make their lives move forward.
Please finish up.
Fearful of losing their jobs and then their homes, and thank you for this time, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, next, we have Jennifer Griffin, welcome Jennifer.
Um, welcome, Mayor, this is Jennifer Griffin, to the council members, public, and our hard-working staff members. Uh, my name is Jennifer Griffin, and, um, I have been very, very concerned about the advent of what I will call the big housing bills. Uh, these are, I won't pick on Senator Weiner, but we'll just take, for example, SB 902, SB 899. SB 902 is a complete rehash of 827 and SB 50, which was defeated. So now we have 902, which is taking up everyone's time and rehashing issues. This allows triplexes and fourplexes to be built on suburban lots, um, with the term "by right," which I guess Sacramento believes they have by right to take over residents' property. We also have SB 899, which was written by Senator Weiner, and this is going into areas allowing churches to be bad neighbors by allowing churches to build up to four-story buildings completely adjacent for housing that is adjacent to neighbors, and the neighbors are not supposed to be told that the housing is going in. This is setting up churches to be bad neighbors, that is incomprehensible. A church, a temple, or a place of worship is a sacred and holy location. We should not be throwing churches into a situation, or temples, where they will be putting, setting them up to be bad neighbors to people that live in the neighborhood. Where are we going with this? I have serious questions about the motivation of these bills, the funding of the bills, who is forcing our senators to write these bills? What is the power base, why, where is the money, we know where the money is coming from, but why are residents of California being subjected to this over and over again? We are being made to feel guilty to live our lives in our suburban neighborhoods, or to live in areas outside of towns. Nothing is sacred, as evidenced by SB 899. We need to get to the bottom of this, because it is not to help homeless people, it is a money-power base. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer, next, we're on to Mooney, welcome, Mooney.
Okay, could you hear me?
We can hear you, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you, so, I don't know if I need to go more than three minutes, I did send, you know, my comments in writing, so it will be on the record. Did we have Shashi Begur on the list? If she is, you know, she offered, no, okay, okay, she offered to give her time to me, that's okay, so I want to cover two topics. Topic one, um, the Works Pro Project, so, I sat through the planning commission meeting. I was appalled to see, you know, all the deliberations, and I do believe that, you know, our city and you, council, need, you know, serious outside legal help, other than, you know, legal counsel that you have, because I don't think, you know, any of the state laws allows stomping over our general plan, right? So, our general plan only allows 45-foot tall buildings there, it's okay to go up to 60 feet, you know, whatever, you know, the bonus, density bonus and all that. 91 feet is not acceptable, so please get some outside legal counsel, council to, to address this topic. Topic two, I think, you know, I sent a link in the, in my email, please take, read through that article, and also, you know, look at the video clip in that, uh, in that article. Basically, it's a, I, you know, George Floyd, whatever happened to George Floyd, very unacceptable, and, and in the article that you will see, there is a elderly Indian grandparent that gets slammed to a concrete slab by a law enforcement officer, just, you know, for no reason, right? We don't want any of these things happening in our city, so I would like city council, um, to attach couple of conditions to sheriff's contract. Every year now, we renew the contract with sheriff's department, so, work condition number one, they need to go through sensitivity training, it's very important. You don't need to apply max force for every situation, right? There is a appropriate force for a given situation, use common sense and handle the situation appropriately, that's very important. Two, zero tolerance, because if you look at, you know, the cop that was involved in the, uh, George Floyd case, the cop had a history. So we need to have zero tolerance for any of, any, uh, any, any behavior like that, right? So please attach those conditions to the sheriff's contract renewal, and please keep the funding level to the same as, you know, what before. I know you are going through the budget challenges, do not reduce funding for sheriff's department, because we need to, we need our residents to feel safe, given what's going on, on restlessness around the city. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mooney, um, next, we have, uh, Nirdas, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor and the council member, the opportunity. My name is Nirmalindu Dash, I'm a Cupertino resident, uh, for 15 years. Um, I'm speaking on a very sensitive issue that's basically going on in the whole nation right now. Uh, this is about George Floyd's death and injustice, a bit of color, especially from the, um, law enforcement that, what is coming out.
Can you speak up, we, we can't hear you.
Oh, sorry, uh, can you hear me right now?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, okay, sorry, I was going to speak up on here, um, so, um, so what I was, like, you know, requesting of the city, I'm very, very proud to be a Cupertino city resident, and very proud to be proud of, you know, living in this city. And I am requesting the city, uh, and to give a, to understand, uh, to give their position, um, on this, currently, um, this George Floyd death and the protests that is happening nationwide, what is our city's position on this one? Number two, that basically, you know, how city is viewing this thing, and number two, what are we doing to bring some change in the police department and in the sheriff's department, and as a city, what we are doing in the grassroots level, uh, so that we can become a trailblazer, and we can demonstrate that Cupertino is taking, as a city, uh, some definitive action to bring some change in the country, and, uh, at least in the local level, what change we are being in. And number three is, uh, what action we are taking, uh, from the city and the city police department, uh, to keep our residents safe, uh, during this, you know, unrest time, and I wanted to, you know, understand that from the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, next, we have Gary Wong, welcome Gary. Unmute you again. Gary, are you there? Okay, oh, whoops, okay, hold on, don't do anything, I'll unmute you again. Okay, go, yeah, we have you.
All right, dear Mayor Scharf and council members, I'm Gary Wong, president of the Campo de Lozano HOA, and speaking on behalf of the organization. We see from Attachment B, Schedule of Construction for Currently Funded CIP Projects, that the Regnar Creek Trails design is complete and construction is scheduled for next year. Despite design being completed, our HOA is still very unclear as to what mitigation measures, if any, is proposed for us. While we have met with staff from time to time, we meet, but follow-up on action items is inconsistent. While we understand the council's intent is not to micromanage staff, since it was a directive by the council to solve the most difficult problems first, and to address the concerns of the residents on Lozano Lane and De Palmane Lane, we would appreciate council members following up from time to time, requesting an update. We request this because as of today's date, we remain unclear as to what the city proposes for our properties. Further, Valley Water indicated to us that they are willing to work with us on our properties for trail mitigation purposes. However, such cooperation can only be initiated by the city. Please see attached email from Valley Water, which I, I sent. Though we have requested so from city staff, there has been no response as to whether the city will assist us in this matter. With the Mercury News reporting that there are 159 homeless persons counted in Cupertino, the city can no longer deny there exists a health and safety problem. Just last week, on Bolinger and Blaney, there was a person sleeping on the sidewalk. The city needs to formulate a humane policy for addressing homelessness, and also assure residents that our homes will be protected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary, um, next, we have, um, uh, I pronounced this wrong, Megha Alango, welcome.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I'll just start by introducing myself, I am Megha Alango, I am a student at UCLA and a current resident of Cupertino. I went to Eaton Elementary School, Lawson Middle School, Cupertino High School, and I've been keeping up with some of the issues in the city. Um, you might have noticed some of the emails that you guys have gotten today, um, from young people specifically in Cupertino regarding, um, the Black Lives Matter movement, and also, um, taking action to, um, to express solidarity with the black community, and also speak out and take action against racial injustice in our city and also in other cities as well. So I just wanted to go over a few points today regarding that. Um, first off, I wanted to give some exposition on the situation, of course, like, I know that most of us as people who are civilly involved have been keeping up with the news. Um, we've heard about and seen the video of the murder of George Floyd, we've seen the protests that have been taking place across the country. I just wanted to establish why it's so important for us to have a statement of solidarity, not just from each individual council member, not just from the mayor, but from all of you collectively as a city and as a city council, because, um, of the systemic racism and police brutality that this incident has brought to light, I think it's important for us to note that it wasn't just an isolated incident. It's not just, it is something that we should acknowledge because of how morally reprehensible it is, and, um, for, as a matter of basic human empathy, but it's also important for us to acknowledge it because it is a symptom of racial injustices in the criminal justice system against, um, black populations, and also against minorities in general. I think it's important to know that even though the city council isn't majority-minority, our city is, and it's important to take, um, the demographics of the population of the city into account, and advocating for a minority community such as a black community, um, is inherently advocating for all communities. Um, so yeah, to go on, um, beyond just making a statement of solidarity, I think it would be important, um, because we are in such a place of privilege, we're, we're in Cupertino, a lot of us are economically affluent, we have great schools, we can trust that the police will come when we call them, um, it's important for us to host dialogue and rally the community to support other communities, and just be, um, an ally towards other commi-, uh, communities, and also in terms of being careful about contracting with our own, like, Santa Clara Police Department, and being conscious of what kind of role that we can play in terms of contributing to the implicit racism that is in our, um, police system and in our criminal justice system. I know that Cupertino is only a small community, but I believe that we can play a part. I think I encourage you to put out a statement of solidarity, to, um, add this as an agenda item for future city council meetings, and to encourage constant conversation over race relations, and also be conscious about our support of police forces and the inherent systemic racism present in them, um, as we continue our dialogue on these kinds of conversations in the city. I'm glad that the mayor mentioned that he would be making a statement later, and I'm looking forward to hearing that, but I just wanted to voice, um, some of the concerns that young people who are in your voting block especially have regarding this kind of situation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, next, we are on to Jahanas Dastur, I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce your first name right, welcome.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so, um, yes, my name is Jahanas, I'm a proud, proud Cupertino High School alum, and currently a medical student at Northwestern Medical School, and I just have a statement as well for the council and all of our listeners today. So, as you might know, the Civil Rights Movement created an immigration advocacy platform, and the passing of the Civil Rights Act in 1964 really set the stage for the creation and passage of the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965. Essentially, the provisions of this Immigration Act allowed for Asian-American families to immigrate to the United States. Without this Civil Rights Movement, many immigrant families would not be here, I would not be here. The African-American movement paved the way for all of us, so when we're seeing our black brothers and sisters being subject to the horrific oppression and violence, we must speak up and act. This is a public health issue. The youth of the Cupertino have shown incredible solidarity, empathy, and activism in response to the despicable police brutality that has occurred. And the sad fact of the matter is, the violence against the African-American community and police brutality is a nationwide issue, and the murder of Mr. George Floyd was not a one-time event. So, on behalf of the Cupertino youth and the young adults, I just want to strongly urge the city to stand with the Black Lives Matter Movement and release a statement of solidarity, and I also just want us to really be thinking deeply about what we can do and how we can move forward in the best way. That's all, thank you.
Wow, very well stated, thank you. Uh, next, uh, we have Sharvani Ja, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hi, um, my name is Sharvani Ja, and I'm a third-year computer science major at UCLA. Um, I attended Freya Elementary School, Lawson Middle School, and Fremont High School, and thus have been a proud resident and have interacted with the residents of Cupertino for most of my life. I also wanted to reiterate the points brought up by previous people about having the city of Cupertino release a statement of solidarity with the Black Lives Matter Movement, and I wanted to focus specifically on the fact that Cupertino is a city with a large Asian population, and historically, as Jahanis just mentioned, um, the Immigration and Nationality Act of 1965, which was advocated for by black groups in the United States, was pivotal to why Asian-Americans were able to immigrate to the United States, and thus proves the larger point that Asian communities and black communities have been historically supporting each other, lifting up each other's voices, and making sure that justice and equality are advocated for both of these, um, communities, as well as additional marginalized groups within the US for a long time now. And as a young member of Cupertino, who has seen my fellow members going out there trying to peacefully protest, trying to peacefully advocate for change and exercise their amendment rights to advocate for the change they want to see in legislation in these systems that inherently, um, are unjust towards especially black communities and people of color in general, it would mean a lot to see the city stand in solidarity behind all these young people who are taking time away from not only their personal lives, but also their education. A lot of people have finals going on right now, and yet they are still going out to peacefully protest on streets, they are still actively donating and fundraising money to help people who are out there trying to advocate for unjust systems, against unjust systems right now, and it would mean a lot if the city could also stand behind them, show them their support, so that young people feel supported by the place they came from, the place they grew up, and the place they have so much to owe, due to not only the strength of the Asian community here, but also the black community that has helped them come to the United States and be so successful and prosperous here, and make Cupertino what it is today. Um, so I would greatly appreciate a statement of solidarity that also focuses on continued action, not just when this is a trend or a hashtag, but also into the future, what we can, what we can do to make sure that this issue doesn't happen again in years to come, or hopefully ever again. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, uh, next, we have Peggy Griffin, welcome Peggy. Peggy, are you there?
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Scharf, council members and staff, I want to piggyback on Connie Cunningham's, um, statement. I read that same article, and the part, I am always, I know every bathroom in the city of Cupertino, because of my son, and gradually, and it really worries me when homeless people don't have access to bathrooms and water to wash their hands. And this, the paragraph said, "The city looked into setting up portable bathrooms and hand-washing stations at the Wolf Road Camp, but determined there's no room. Close a lane, there's not a lot of traffic. Give them bathrooms and places to wash their hands." These are real people, and they need these, and if they don't have them, they're going to use something else, and the stores aren't open. So the, the options are not pleasant, so please, consider making room if there isn't room. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peggy, um, and next, we have, um, Anita Alango, welcome.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so my name is Anita Alango, I am a current computer science student at UCLA, and I attended Eaton Elementary School, Lawson Middle School, and Cupertino High School. As speakers before me have reiterated, the youth of Cupertino have been making significant efforts to raise awareness about the Black Lives Matter cause and important issues surrounding these protests and the murder of George Floyd, along with the systemic racism and police brutality, um, that caused this, these events that we're experiencing today. Um, since we are a predominantly Asian and white community in Cupertino, it's important for all of us to recognize our privilege and make sure we use it to amplify black voices. We would like to see a statement of solidarity from the city council and the mayor to support the cause, to be clear, we would like an official written statement on behalf of the city of Cupertino. Frankly, it's disappointing that one hasn't been released yet, given current events and given people's reactions to all of these events. Um, even the tech community, which is usually reticent to make statements on anything political, has begun to develop opinions and speak up, and I think it's the responsibility of the council to think deeply about these racial issues and encourage dialogue among citizens. We would like to see. We would like to see the city make clear statements and actions to increase accountability of the police force. So what will we do as a city to bring about change within our city and the Santa Clara County and keep the Santa Clara County Police Force accountable? It's also the responsibility of the city to support any peaceful protesters and meet them with empathy, not aggression, as we have seen across the country, even in peaceful suburbs like Walnut Creek. Everyone has a right to free speech and we really, really need to respect that in these times. Solidarity and being an ally isn't just about making a statement. Continued action is required. Uh, we would love to see you make this an agenda item in future meetings. Talk about this and raise awareness. I really, really hope you think seriously and deeply about what me and the speakers before me have said. And honestly, just wrap up with saying, "Black lives matter." And if we support black lives, we, and if we support black communities, we improve the lives of all communities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I will point out, this is our first meeting since this, the murder of George Floyd occurred. And I did make my own statement on Facebook, but that's my personal statement. And the council will certainly consider putting that on the agenda for a city statement and I have a statement later in this meeting as well. So next we have, there's no more oral. Did anyone, no one wrote anything in, right Kirsten?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so now we are on to reports by council and staff. I would like to request that we do a slight adjustment so I can present my statement on the George Floyd incident now rather than at the end of the meeting. So how do I do that?
Would we be all able to comment on this if you're going to?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, I, I would, uh, if we need a vote, then I would so move.
Okay, and I'll second. Can we have a roll call vote on modifying the agenda for us to all speak on this if we wish?
Councilmember Paul?
Yes, so are we adding a agenda item?
Right, well, we're, we're allowing council comments to happen now instead of just at the, uh, just at the end.
Um, so are we having comment later also?
Yes, this is.
I think we are allowed to add an item with the council too, if that's what you want.
Okay, so we're, yeah, we're, we're allowing council comments at this time as well as later in the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's I, Ms., uh.
Councilmember Sinks?
Hi.
Councilmember Willie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Hi.
Mayor Scharf?
I.
Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, but Lisa Warren said that she's had her hand raised the entire.
Sorry, I, I just am seeing it now. All right, so we will go back to oral communications for a moment and let Lisa speak. Welcome Lisa.
Thank you. So five quick little bullet points. First, I want to have a shout out to the unconventional graduates of our high schools. They are kind of lost in the shuffle, so I just want everyone to know that they're happening this week. And there will be car parades and people going to participate and celebrate those kids that have worked so hard to get there. And next to that, education related is I had sent an email and a letter that was written by CUSD, CUSD, excuse me, to, um, public figures requesting help in getting the state to fix, I will call it correct, or fix the funding formula for CUSD. They are in big trouble and I'm hoping you're considering doing that, supporting that. Westport project was taken off tonight's agenda. I see that planning commission meeting for next week has been canceled. I just want to say, there's been nothing on the website about what the changes to Westport are that have prompted this delay, but whatever they are, in my opinion, they need and must go back to planning commission before they go to city council. I have a request that the library field be formally designated as a city park. Repeat, the library field be formally designated as a city park. And I would like to welcome our new director of Parks and Recreation, who I believe began her tasks yesterday and ask both, well, she and the rest of you to please consider continuing online fitness classes after the COVID-19 restrictions are in place or out of place, whatever we want to call that. And not only to have them live, but also to record them. And I talk, I, I speak about doing this for a fee. People will pay for this. It's a way for the city to make more income than they are making off their fitness classes currently. When you have a hundred people participating in an online class and you can only fit 22 or 25 in a class physically, you've got more people that can do it and will pay for it. So I don't know what the hesitation is. I know you're working on it, but please continue to do so and make it happen. That's it.
Okay, thank you. We will reclose oral and now we will go back to the council comments. So I have prepared something. I will, I'll go first. So I know by now all of us have seen the horrific video or heard about the killing of George Floyd in Minneapolis. And as we know, the actions and inactions of the officers involved are very deplorable. And at least one police officer has been charged with murder as well as being fired from the police force. Understandably, people have taken to the streets to protest this injustice. Most of the protests have been peaceful. Unfortunately, some groups have used what has happened as an excuse to loot and destroy. And yesterday, uh, was even more deplorable what happened in Washington DC. The whole situation is being aggravated by the actions and unhelpful rhetoric of our federal government. Yesterday, we saw peaceful protesters in Washington DC tear gassed by military police so the president could do a photo op in front of a church that had been damaged by rioters. And in a rare display of bipartisanship, both Democratic and Republican legislators expressed their shock and outrage at the president's actions and condemned them. This kind of thoughtless violence perpetrated by our own government only serves to incite even more violence. I read a statement by a clergyman in Georgia who stated, and I'll quote, "If you continue to elect or appoint white supremacists to positions of power, whether at the federal, state, or local level, this kind of thing is going to happen over and over again." The George Floyd murder was the catalyst for the protests and riots, but was not the cause of the unrest. This has been building up for decades. Cupertino, we're blessed to be a multiracial community. We decided long ago that mutual understanding and respect develops a much healthier, safer, and caring community. We stand in solidarity with the black communities across the country, but it would be a mistake to claim that we understand what they're going through. Systemic injustices and racism and the dehumanization are deeply rooted in our society. The roots of the discontent of black Americans run deep. Right now, we're in the middle of the COVID-19 pandemic, but the police brutality against African Americans has been the pandemic that we just don't ever seem to be able to address. It's not just George Floyd. It's Freddie Gray, Walter Scott, Tamir Rice, Michael Brown, and Oscar Grant. It's just not possible for those of us that have led privileged lives, including myself, to understand what the black community is going through. So we ask our community to stand together through peaceful exchange and discourse. Hopefully, we can enact change and move forward to a future with more equity and inclusion in Cupertino in general and in California as a whole and our country. Thank you. And who would like to go next? Rod?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate your statement. I think it, um, it speaks well and, and for my part, I condemn the actions of the Minneapolis Police Department, these officers. I really don't understand how a city that calls itself progressive could have so failed in, in training and preparation. I think that, um, you know, what's now incumbent on us as electeds here in this city, I think it's important for our residents to understand that we contract with the Santa Clara County Sheriff. And so to do our job, I think it would be appropriate for us to have the sheriff come and talk to us about our practices regarding use of force. And how do we, what, what do we do to one of the, the youth speakers that was, was on earlier to ensure that, you know, justice is, is, um, uh, meted out fairly in, in our community and in practices? I, I, uh, I, I would like to understand what our policies are with regard to use of force. And I have to say, having contracted, right, we've never really, with the sheriff, we've never really had that discussion. I think another specific action the city can take, given, um, given a, uh, information circulating online that there is to be a protest at 4:00 PM on, on Saturday at the sheriff's substation. You know, I, I think the, whoever's organizing this is going to do whatever they're going to do. But I do have some concerns about the amount of space in front of the sheriff's substation. There's not really much room for, for parking or for people to congregate. If we have a lot of people there, I think they're going to spill out into Deansa. And I am concerned about the safety of the participants. So I, whether the offer is accepted or not, I would appreciate the city being proactive and offering, uh, some safe alternatives, which in my mind could include our library field where there's a lot of space. We could make sure that we facilitated, uh, free speech there, um, the right of the public to congregate. I think we also have to think about people's health. We are still in a pandemic. To the extent people are crowding into a, a small space like the parking lot in front of that substation, I think they're, they're putting each other at risk. Uh, another possible place could be, um, our memorial park. I think we, we're not in the driver's seat on whether the organizers choose to use these spaces, but I think it would be prudent for us to at least consider offering them. And I will say I would support, um, us considering a resolution as early as a, a special meeting on, on Friday, uh, for us to make a statement about this. I think, um, this is our first regular meeting after this. And, uh, given the emotions, uh, how people are feeling right now, I think it might be appropriate for us to take action on this, um, as, as early as a special meeting on Friday. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion. We do have a, um, closed session on Friday. We could have an open session as well, um, to discuss this. Do we have time to notice that Kirsten?
Yes, and actually you have it open.
Oh, we do. That's right. We do have an open. Okay, so yeah, we could, we could work on that resolution in the next three days hopefully and have something ready. So thank you. Um, John, do you have anything to say?
Yes, yes, I would. I don't think an event like this can, can happen and us not be, be touched. And I think, um, you know, being elected officials, I think the community does want to hear from us. In that regard, you know, the killing of, uh, George Floyd, despicable for which there are no words that could, could, could come close. What happened to him? When he was handcuffed, laying on the ground, four officers around him, there's no threat there. And to have somebody, one of those officers, take his life from him? Atrocious, heinous, there's no words for that. He was a human being. He was a person. He has a family. They loved him. He loved them. And now he's not. So here we are. We, we need to really acknowledge that all people, everyone, has to be treated with respect, compassion, dignity at all times. And there's no, there's no tolerance for anything less than that. There can be no limitation because of a person's color, their skin, their ethnicity, their religion, their orientation. Everyone, as far as I'm concerned, everyone should be treated the same with dignity. Okay, we've, we've seen this on the news before. As sad as it is, we've seen it on the news. It's not something new. Kind of in our, our area where we're all very consumed with so many other items, we, we don't see, see it the way the other people see it day to day. But this time, I'm going to make a pledge to not forget it. I'm going to look for opportunities to, to somehow make sure this would never happen again. I, I do like what so many residents said about speaking up and asking us to make a statement, be, uh, in solidarity with, with all of these people. Their strength in numbers, the message we can get it across. Okay, we do see a lot of things we shouldn't be seeing now, vandalism, rioting. There's no place for that and we, we definitely need to, to make a statement about that too. Let, let all these people, their voices are important and let them know we're here to, to listen to their voices. Don't use their energy for destructive things. Use that energy for change. My priority has always been resident engagement. These residents speaking tonight, the residents, the, the communities that we see on TV, how much louder can they speak? We have to hear them. We have to do whatever we can. And so I do agree with doing some things, however small they are. Councilman Sinks' idea of saying, hey, come to library field. Yes. Or memorial park. Yes. Voice, voice your, your concerns. We are here to listen. Meeting with the sheriff and actually asking him, what is his criteria? One of the instances that has happened just recently where another person was assaulted and the two officers had their body cams turned off. So they fired the, um, police chief. I mean, how can these things happen? You know, by us meeting with the sheriff and, and making sure that it won't happen in this community, I think that's important. A study session. Let the residents come and tell us, maybe in a town hall, what have they seen? What should we be aware of that we're, we haven't been aware of? So the last item I would say is, I think it's very fortunate that Governor Newsom is our governor at this point. It was yesterday that I saw on Yahoo News where he did his, his statement and he was very clear that he is listening. This has gone on not just this generation, not just the previous generation or the generation before that. This has been a systemic thing that has been going on for hundreds of years and he has vowed to make sure it stops. I encourage everybody to, uh, type in Newsom rejects to your Google browser. Newsom rejects and you'll get a couple links and pick the, pick the Yahoo News link. It's about a 12-minute president, uh, statement of Governor Newsom at a church telling you what he intends to do. And to me, wow, very powerful stuff. We need to, to listen to that. So I, I really support on Friday, if we can get together and, and make a statement in solidarity. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Chow.
Hi. So, um, I don't have a statement prepared, but I think everyone has spoken so eloquently. The, the students who are just amazing, the, that, those words. The, the students who are just amazing, the, that, those words. And I agree with everything council member, um, John Willey said, and, uh, the mayor also was, said a lot. And I think, um, like council member Willey said, we cannot, that, we cannot tolerate more violence, more brutality from anyone. I, I pray for a day when all of us are treated for what, who we are as a person, not our skin color, not where you were born, not whether you speak perfect English, but just for who we are as a person, how we treat each other. And I think that day can come and, but at the same time, I also hope that we look beyond actions, look beyond, one action doesn't represent a person, a group. When someone takes an action that's despicable, it comes from a long line of education that this person could have received. We, they need help. Then let's figure out how can we help, uh, to change the situation? This is not one incident. This, there is a pattern that this is happening. I, and then that means, it seems some department, police department already has some sensible sensibility, sensitivity training, some de-escalation training. However, that may or may not have been effective. Then, um, let's look at how do we help them to be a better policeman? I believe ninety percent, ninety-nine percent of policemen are trying to do, do good. They decide to take, to take this job, to protect all of us, put their lives on the line. And how do we help them all do a better job? And maybe find a way to be possible to help them before this point is reached. And it, in terms of the location of the protest, I'm not sure City Hall is an ideal location because it's in the middle of residential neighborhood. I'm wondering with, uh, there won't be a lot of traffic on Saturday. I think the protesters do want to do it in front of a police station. Maybe we can consider close up Deanza or, uh, one side of Deanza. Maybe just close up that portion of Deanza and the detour or the traffic to, um, to another, to other location. Maybe then that will create a safe area that whoever are going there, they know that they are going there for a specific purpose. Um, yeah, please, please consider, consider that.
All right. Uh, Darcy.
So I apologize for the length, um, but I won't make any council comments at the end of the meeting. Uh, today I am limiting my council comments to one topic and request due to its importance to all of us and national immediacy. I believe that we should agendize a statement condemning racial inequity in general and violence against the African-American community by law enforcement in particular. The most basic form of injustice and inequity occurs when a group of people feels their safety is placed into jeopardy by the very people entrusted with ensuring it. This is not a new phenomenon and it is in fact deeply entrenched in our society and history. And yet, lack of equity neither begins nor ends with the most extreme example of the inequity, nor is it successfully addressed by soothing words which may or may not be sincere or consistent. In order to remedy this deeply entrenched problem that gets to the heart of who we are as a people, individually, in groups, as communities and as a nation, we need to make a commitment to being fair and we need to be able to have honest conversations. It is unquestionably unfair what happened to George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, and Breonna Taylor, and many other people who have died as a result of excesses and yes, discrimination in our society and in our collective law enforcement practices. But really, the attitudes do start in society. One can look around at any number of metrics and start talking about inequities. We, we are a diverse community and nation. We have no choice either functionally or morally, other than to make a commitment to fairness and inclusion. At the same time, we have to stop the finger pointing and get into the business of achieving solutions rather than languishing. We have to realize that these are not easy requirements on anyone's part to navigate and achieve. One might ask, for instance, what happens when one group is treated unfairly so that inclusion can happen for another group? For our community, that is in fact the underlying unfairness that the majority of us face. We in fact receive, for instance, far less funding for our schools, just by way of one example, than any of the other school districts that surround us, and even more so, far less than the state average. And our students have to work harder and perform better on objective scales in order to have the same future educational opportunities. Will these requirements to work harder and perform objectively better in order to receive less follow them throughout their lives? Are we supposed to go along and tell our children that yes, subjective factors are more fair, including the ones that work to reduce, reduce their deserved opportunities? Fairness is not a one-sided requirement, yet we see no honest discussion of the multifaceted nature of the equities of the situation, either here or where the overall picture of historical race relations in this country are concerned. One thing is certain, however. We cannot, as a society, continue to allow any of those entrusted with the safety of all of society's members become the agents for evoking fear and a very visceral and real lack, sense of a lack of safety for entire groups of people. The time to solve this problem is now. We are more closely connected than we have ever been in some very basic and very important ways. Information and communication due largely to the efforts of this in our surrounding communities are virtually instantaneous between and among vast swaths of the world population. We must use these tools to communicate our values and our aspirations. We must look upon the protests that we see across the nation today and in our earlier days as an opportunity to engage in a conversation affirming our most basic shared values. And, and if we are truly who we say we are, then we can ensure that every member of our society feels safe because we have the tools to ensure that every member of our society feels safe. In our area, we have law enforcement that understands the strength of cooperation and diversity. But it is true, there are no perfect systems and no perfect people which cannot stand to improve. The inequities are an ongoing issue, deeply felt by many. And because of this and because of our moment, I support and indeed urge agendizing a statement from our city condemning racial inequity in general and violence against the African and community, African-American community in particular by law enforcement as antithetical to our shared values with an ongoing commitment to ensure that we approach our problems in a fair manner, in a thoughtful manner, in an honest manner, and in a manner that solves problems rather than carelessly or quite often much more harmfully in a superficially appeasing manner, brushing the problems to the side. Let us have compassion. Let us be generous with each other. This council can carry on our ongoing work and affirm our commitment by agendizing such a statement. Let us stop wasting time and lives. We can sweep away the hypocrisies and make this commitment to each other for the well-being and success of all of us. We can and will all get to a better place for this effort following such a commitment. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Darcy. Um, so I'll certainly be happy to put that on the agenda, um, myself and, um, Darcy, it would be great if you could actually help write, um, the resolution, um, after that impassioned, uh, statement. I think you may be the best qualified, uh, to do so. Uh, anyway, we are back to, um, yes.
One person with their hand raised for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, let me go back to that screen. Um, oh, Kitty Moore, welcome Kitty.
Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Scharf. Um, I'm concerned about this topic, uh, and the protests that they are planning. Uh, I was given a schedule, um, earlier today showing, um, the protests planned throughout the region and ours is at our police station. Uh, I'm concerned that this topic devolved into determining a location for an unnamed group which has scheduled protests in the area. I'm additionally concerned that this meeting has served to more widely advertise the protest. And that you might end up with extra individuals that, uh, were not planned on. I think that surrounding a police station is, um, it could be viewed as an antagonistic act. Uh, if the topic is agendized to Friday, will the protesters even have time to relocate? Uh, the West Valley Police Station is relatively small, um, and they are a contracted police force, which is not in a building. They occupy alone. There is a very small parking area and they are surrounded by businesses and homes. I do not support closing Saratoga Sunnyvale Road to accommodate a larger group in the street. And your job is to protect the health, safety and welfare of the community. Should our police be unable to get to attend any victims of crimes? Um, I'm, I'm deeply concerned about that. So please, I implore upon you to find a large area, um, so that their freedom of speech may be upheld. I, I don't know Memorial Park or, or the library field, if those are the best solutions, best areas for that. Um, but I, you know, I completely sympathize with this situation and understand why this needs to happen. These, the voices need to be heard. Uh, the, the George Floyd murder was, I, I couldn't even make it through the video. Uh, it, it was just unbelievable. Anyhow, um, getting back to my point, uh, please provide a large area so that their freedom of speech will be upheld. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kitty. Uh, I see Captain Urina is still on. Now, I don't think that it's up to us in the city to tell the protesters where, where they can protest. Um, no, they, they've decided that, uh, but perhaps he can comment on the street. I don't think we have the authority to close down that road. Uh, but Captain, can you speak to this?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Scharf again. Um, to, to the question of shutting down, uh, Deanza or Saratoga Sunnyvale Road, that is not the intent. The intent is to allow traffic to flow. And so we will be here attempting to control traffic and, uh, the crowd that does assemble in front of the office here.
Um, and as far as moving it, I, I mean, what's your feeling if you even had someone to talk to, would, you know, would they be willing to move it? It seems like they, they desire to protest in front of police stations.
Yeah, I, I do agree that, um, this particular location is probably not the best. I agree that, uh, something like Memorial Park would certainly accommodate more people. Um, and so that is a concern that we have. Um, I do understand that there is some communication, uh, with a member of our faith community that we may be able to talk about this. Um, however, um, it certainly will be something that, um, the group would have to decide. It's not something we can force, uh, them to do. But again, we do certainly want to hear, um, their message and so having a, a bigger area so that they can, uh, have the, the adequate space would certainly be our, our recommendation. And so we, we are, uh, making that request. Um, but we're, again, um, it's going to be up to, to the organizers to make that decision.
Right. Okay. How mu, how much parking on a Saturday, all those businesses would be closed in that area, wouldn't they? Uh, the share your building?
Correct. So we have communicated with the landlord of this building and, uh, we will have all the, uh, the other offices that are occupied this building, uh, vacate their, their parking spaces, um, so we don't anticipate any, any of their vehicles here. But again, um, it is a small building, uh, you know, our, our parking lot in the front is relatively small. I think it's, I don't know, two hundred and something feet wide by, you know, I don't know, seventy-five feet. So it is small. Um, and, uh, my understanding is that there's a couple of hundred, uh, people that are, um, you know, anticipating, anticipate making it out here. And so again, we do, uh, want a bigger, uh, larger, uh, more conducive location so that they can certainly, um, broadcast their message.
All right. Thank you.
So, would the, so, uh, are you planning to maybe close up the parking lot to allow the protest? So, but then protesters will, people will have to plan to park elsewhere?
Correct. So, so we are, uh, working on our safety plan, um, and that does, that does include, uh, closing off part of our, um, parking lot, but also allowing enough space so that, um, a couple of hundred people can certainly, um, be out front. So that's part of our planning process that we have in place. We're working again with, uh, city manager Dev Fain, uh, to, to make sure that we address, um, all these, uh, concerns that everyone's raised.
So if you're expecting two or three hundred people, even if you're closed off the parking lot, there is not enough space? I'm concerned that because your building is right next to, uh, two shopping malls and it's all shopping malls around. And if there is no space, they will scatter around to other shopping malls. So, but if we can close, um, part of Deanza, maybe half the west side of, uh, Sunnyville, Saratoga, Saratoga, Sunnyville Road, then we can, the crowd could be on, on the road away from nearby businesses. And the traffic probably can, probably can use the east side of, of the road. If you don't want to completely close it, would that mean try to keep them away from businesses? Would that be, uh, safer?
Yeah, yeah, certainly. Our goal is to make sure that everyone who attends is safe and also to protect any property that may be damaged. Um, so we will certainly be making those decisions, um, you know, wh, when they show up. Uh, I do think that the front area could accommodate a few hundred people, um, given the, the length of it. Like I said, it's over two hundred feet. We, we were out there looking at it. Um, but again, um, yeah, uh, I, I do agree that, uh, a better location would be Memorial Park, um, some, somewhere where we don't have to worry about vehicles driving by. Um, that certainly is a concern for us. We don't want anyone to get, uh, hit by a vehicle. Um, so we will, uh, be providing, uh, security for that. Uh, and if we need, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. If we can, you know, if they'd be willing to go to Memorial Park, that would be much better. They'd be more visible too, to the community.
Correct.
I think that's part of the goal, but.
Yes.
Anyway, we need to move on. I have two more speakers here. Uh, Megka, Meha, I'm sorry, I don't pronounce your name right. Alongo, welcome. You still there? Oh, disappeared. Um, okay. Suzanne.
Hi, um, this is for the, uh, sheriff. Um, I work at a business that's directly across the street from the, um, where the protest is going to be in the shopping center with Halal Meats. And I'm just curious if they're going to have any, um, police presence in the, you know, like a police officer of any kind in those shopping centers to protect the, the businesses? That's all.
Okay. Captain, can you answer that?
I think I'm back. Um, we will have, uh, enough staffing so that we monitor the entire area surrounding the substation. Um, I will say though, that across the way here is San Jose jurisdiction. So the San Jose Police Department does provide services to that shopping center. However, um, they have been or will be notified, uh, the assembly. And like I said, we will have, um, deputies that are monitoring the shopping centers that surround this, this building.
Great. Okay. Now I see, uh, uh, Mega Alongo, did I pronounce your name right or? Mega Alongo, did I pronounce your name right or?
Yes, it's mega.
Mega. Okay, welcome.
All right. Yeah, I just, uh, appreciate you all taking the time to talk about this. I just wanted to give a quick follow-up, like some of the concerns that I had after listening to everyone's statements. Um, I'm, yeah, I'm kind of not commenting on the location of the protest or whatever protest is happening, but, um, I think some of the other things that were, are worth focusing on are the actual remarks you made, like regarding what happened in Minnesota. Um, I think that, um, among all the statements, there is a lack of calls to action and specific actions. And I think it, we would appreciate it if you took the time to more carefully consider what those specific calls to action would look like, specifically what council member thinks brought up about examining our relationship with the Santa Clara Police Department and knowing that the contracts that we have with them um, are also in part, um, our accountability to take care of. Um, and we have like the power to like put pressure on the department or make sure that they're following, um, safer protocols. So I think that was one point I wanted to make. Second point, um, with, um, council member, uh, with, sorry, with Vice Mayor, um, Paul's statement. Um, I wanted to know that, I, I wanted to note that the comment made, um, comparing the situation with the black community right now to the situation of Asian students in our school is not something I found very appropriate. I think that's a mentality we should be very careful, um, of avoiding because I agree that, um, as Asian Americans, we do face discrimination, but that discrimination is in no way comparable to the types of discriminations that black Americans face. And I think, um, relating this to our school, our schools being underfunded, like our schools are among the best in the nation. Um, I think it's just very haphazard to make that, um, that correlation to, from like, um, racism against black people in the criminal justice system and institutions in general to treatment of our students in schools because our students are clearly excelling. There's always room to improve and I'm not familiar with the funding situations, but I think making that kind of comparison is very careless and it reinforces, um, stereotypes, um, in terms of equality, in terms of racist behaviors against Asian and black communities when they are very different. That's just kind of a point I wanted to make and I found that pretty disturbing about that statement that was made.
Okay, thank you. Um, seeing no, let me just scroll down here. Um, yeah, I see no more hands raised on that. So we can move on.
Since it was directed at me.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
I, I just, I just want to make very clear that I am in no way, um, equating police brutality with, uh, discrimination felt by other groups for, um, you know, other purposes. But my point is that there is inequity, all right? And so I, I am not saying that it is tantamount in any way, shape or form absolutely stand with, uh, the African-American community and, uh, the, the profound amounts of brutality that they've suffered uh, over, over centuries. So, but by, I, I thank the speaker, uh, for raising the concern and, and for the opportunity uh, to clarify that I, I in no way meant to, uh, equate those experiences. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um.
But I, I'd like to add that, yes. And these two are totally, totally different issue, but that doesn't mean the issue facing our students do not exist. They do still exist and you are very lucky. You, you are performing at the top of your class. You are in UCLA. But there are a lot of students in our schools. They don't, they are at, even at their fifty percent, they are, they are struggling. Only our students at the top ten, five percent are, 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 are performing. They, they get to go to schools they want to, but a lot of them are trying harder. So it's just, we, we cannot forget every, every, there are all kinds of discriminations in the world. And we want to treat all, all of them. Um, everyone should be valued, therefore who they are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let me just say, I really appreciate what the speaker said and I agree completely with, with her to conflate what's happening with school funding to the incident in Minneapolis is tantamount to the kind of rhetoric, rhetoric we often hear with, um, you know, oh, well, it's not Black Lives Matter, all lives matter. And that is misunderstanding the situation to a tremendous degree.
And I'd like to also point out, there is also systematic discrimination attacks on Asians throughout the pandemic. And there are someone collecting incidents, a hundred incidents being reported daily. And so it does exist. Let's not ignore that.
So the city.
There are, there are, this is no comparison with what happened with police brutality. But these things do exist. Let's not ignore them.
Okay, City Manager, your, your update on COVID nineteen response efforts?
Mr. Mayor.
Wait, well, sorry, sorry. Oh, there's another speaker now. Sorry. Okay, um, Jhanaz Dastor, welcome.
Hi, yes. Um, I promise I'll make this super quick. Um, you know, I'm glad we're having these kind of conversations. Um, I just want to point out that, um, injustice anywhere is a threat to injustice everywhere. And we have to understand, you know, that the discrimination against the African-American community and all that they have done for us as an Asian-American community as well, um, cannot be forgotten. And I think that it's important that right now, the focus should be on this movement because our solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement and with the police brutality and systemic issues facing the African-American community also, um, ends up paving the way as well for paying attention to discrimination everywhere. So, um, I just, um, wanted to put that out there. I think it's important to have that, um, in the record.
Thank you. Okay, uh, City Manager, can you give our COVID nineteen response effort update?
Yes, but I assure you it will pale in comparison to this particular discussion. So I, I, uh, I apologize for that right out the gate.
What, what's COVID anymore?
What is COVID anyways, right?
Oh, my God.
I actually have good news, so maybe we can, um, focus on that for a little bit. So first of all, I would like to introduce our new Parks and Rec Director. As of yesterday, June first, she's been hard at work for the last few days. She's here with us at our council meeting. Uh, her name is Joanne Magrini. She comes to us from San Bruno's Community Services Department. She has experience in senior services, library, parks, recreation service, everything you can uh, want in a Parks and Rec professional. So we are very happy to have her here. Um, she first came from San Bruno and prior to that, she worked at the USF recreational sports department. She has a master's in sports and fitness management from USF and a bachelor's in communications from UCSB. So welcome, Joanne. Um, let's see here. Okay, so, um, the new county, there's a new county health order that was issued yesterday, June first, and will take effect on June fifth. First, I'm going to talk about the differences in the order than the previous order. And then I'll tell you what, what's happening in Cupertino as a result of this relaxation of the shelter in place. It allows for outdoor dining and in-store shopping, house cleaning, shoe and watch repair and similar businesses, pet grooming and dog walking, childcare, summer camps, summer school, um, as lo- so long as there's a change in the group every three weeks. Small outdoor ceremonies and religious gatherings in groups less than twenty-five. All outdoor activities with no physical contact such as hiking, tennis and golf, outdoor swimming pools, camping, drive-in theaters and automobile-based gatherings such as motorcades for graduation. In Cupertino, with the social distancing requirements and face covering requirements still applicable, um, council is considering an emergency ordinance, um, expanding outdoor retail to include restaurants in a streamlined permitting process of temporary use permits um, on Friday as part of the open session. I'm sorry, the special session. Um, as far as summer camps go, uh, the Parks and Rec Department are working and have been working on offering two sessions this summer. Uh, one starting in June, on June twenty-second, ending July seventeenth. Um, and one starting July twentieth and ending August fourteenth, again, with the requirements of groups of twelve children at a time and that cohort not mixing with other cohorts. Um, this is also, um, really good because it does not, uh, make it, the previous order had it so that summer camps and such were for essential workers only. And now it's for everybody. So I think that's really good. They're working on that. Of course, hiking, tennis and golf have been open, uh, for the last two weeks. So that's not new for Cupertino. And as far as the BlackBerry Farm Swimming Pool, unfortunately, it has to remain closed for the summer because we have no lifeguards. Um, as a reminder to council, uh, training, actually these, the interview and training, selection and training of lifeguards, um, were supposed to be done in the April, May timeframe, and there's no way to have done that. I also think that's part of my COVID update, um, I've started to include uh, an update on the homeless encampment because the city continues to get inquiries. Not so much complaints anymore, but inquiries and just questions about what's happening. So the current shelter in place order still has them an accepted, accepted to the shelter in place order, meaning they are free to move about as they need to. They are still required to do as much social distancing as possible in the encampment, but um, as you can see, it's in pretty, a, a pretty small area, so it's difficult to do. Um, as soon as this week, and I can't tell you what the dates are, and this is new to council too, so this is late breaking news. Um, there will be provisions for trash pickup for the encampment, um, the encampment occupants, so that they can clear their areas of trash and debris that they don't need. They don't have a place to, um, discard them, so they end, end up in the roadway. And so, um, we're going to be offering trash pickup for them, um, more often than just the ones, but on a set schedule. Um, as well as looking into bathrooms and hand wash, um, porta-potties and a hand wash station um, at that location provided by a potential partner. But at this point, um, I don't want to say who the partner is until they confirm that it all can happen. But it looks like it can all happen this week and I want to ha- um, thank Jim Moore for pushing a little bit on this. I had kind of taken initial look at it and didn't think it was going to fit. Um, but, you know, we've, he's looked at it. He took pictures and sent them. Uh, I had other people look at it, um, at his urging and we are moving ahead. Um, I also want to say for folks that are, um, impacted by that particular, the location of the encampment, i.e. the neighborhoods around there where I get a lot of emails. We think this is of course, the best way to keep it sanitary and clean for the duration of the shelter in place. So people have been free to call me and email me and I'm sure they will continue to do so as we see changes there, um, in the coming weeks. Um, and as Captain Urina has said a number of times, we are coordinating, um, our, our plan for the, um, protests that are scheduled for the Saturday, June sixth at four o'clock. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Whoops. Okay.
Can I, may I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just, you know, um, the, the thing is that, um, I know we didn't get to go through our normal process, but given my understanding of the community, the the order is it, it would allow for a swimming, community swimming pools to be reopened. Is that correct?
Correct. Public outdoor swimming pools.
So, I, I'm sure there are a lot of people who are certified as lifeguards, um, and we know that we have a real employment problem. Isn't there some special process we could use to onboard people previously trained as lifeguards? Maybe we give them a refresher or, or requalification, but it just seems to me like, uh, well, it's, it's already starting to be a hot summer.
And it'll be unfortunate to lose the entire summer, correct?
And we're, we're only at the start of June and I realize that, um, it may take an exceptional process, but I would think that, um, our new
We can look into that.
Um, Park, Parks and Rec Director may be able to, to sort out how to onboard people with previous training, um, doing a requal or whatever is necessary quickly. But I would hate to lose a whole summer of, of recreation if it can be done in a, you know, in a safe and respectful manner, following the county's orders. So that would be my request.
We can certainly look into it.
Thank you. Appreciate your report.
So, Deb, could you clarify for the public why Cupertino has no staff to provide any social services? To, that's simply not, we don't have any staffing for that.
What are you talking about? The homeless encampment?
Yeah, it's, I think, yeah. We don't get, we don't get that, uh, funding.
Right, we do not, right, we do not get resources for that. We work with, um, so with regard to the encampments, both at the location of South Two Eighty and the one that's north of Two Eighty on the same side of Wolf. It's closer to the Hamptons. Um, we have to work, regardless of which, um, jurisdiction has control over it. So the one at South Eighty is under Caltrans jurisdiction. The other one is within the city's jurisdiction. We still have to work with the county to ensure that uh, these folks have a, a longer-term solution than just kind of, you know, disbanding the encampment and scattering them about only to regather elsewhere. It's not a, that's not a long-term solution.
Cupertino gets only seven percent of, uh, one dollar of poverty tax. County gets thirty-four percent. There is, with that, that's why we rely on the county to provide these services.
Yes, and that's, they, that's, they've established the Office of Supportive Housing to deal with that. And we do have one resource that can help coordinate, but it's, uh, Carrie Huesler. And she's our one-person, um, housing department. And she's also working on the rental assistance program. She's super swamped. So, um, yes, and so we're just kind of all chipping in to figure that out, uh, with her, uh, and the county and coordinating with, um, others to, uh, address not only the near-term issue of sanitation and safety for everybody, but going forward and what, what happens after the SIP.
Yes, so maybe the residents who care should also write to the Board of Supervisors of the county because they are the agency who are actually responsible for this.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, I, I brought this up with the Office of Supportive Housing on the, um, twice-weekly calls, um, the county, um, but have not really gotten anywhere. I've asked about the money for motel rooms. The money from FEMA doesn't apply unless the people are at risk or already, um, contracted COVID. So that's not money that's actually available. Um.
Yeah, I, I, for my part, I would hope that we could find, um, I, I really appreciate these mitigation measures in, in a temporary sense, and I hope we can uh, move forward and think about where we could locate permanent supportive housing. It's going to take years, right? Uh, at least it takes a long time even to, to put up temporary buildings, but I think, um, we need to be thoughtful. We know that San Jose, uh, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, all cities, uh, uh, are, are dealing with this problem. They, they all have shelters, at least for cold weather. And, uh, we ought to be thinking about how to do that as well. Thank you.
Their, their shelters are funded by the county, right?
Right, they're available.
Right, so there's a, there's a partnership that goes on with, with sometimes with churches and sometimes with, uh, certainly the county. Yep.
So, their shelters should serve our residents too. That's my point.
Yes, and we also are working with our faith-based, uh, network to see what kind of nearer-term solutions we can come up with, uh, because to Rod's point, you know, any kind of housing or something, uh, whether it's temporary or permanent shelter will take a while. So, um, you know, in our hopes that the shelter in place will not last that long, um, we are coming up with other solutions that may work more near-term. But it's a complicated matter, so we're moving diligently but carefully and um, this first step, this next interim step with addressing the sanitation and trash, trash collection for them will help.
Just one more question for you, uh, uh, and maybe Darcy or somebody who's, who works on the library stuff. Can give us an update. I mean, uh, do, do we have any potential reopening date for the library under any terms where materials could be exchanged?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. We did get an update from the library, county library. Their city staff, their city staff, their staff will be in the library starting, I believe it's next week to prepare for, uh, basically folks will be allowed to, um, to order their books online and they'll have curbside drop-off and pickup.
Do they have a start date for that yet?
Um, I don't know that. I just know that staff is going to be. I don't know that. I just know that staff is going to be in.
It sounds like maybe sometime this next month, this month.
It'll be soon, sooner rather than later. Yes, I'm hoping, I won't put words in their mouth, but the update did say that. Their staff would be in the libraries, working, starting next week. They didn't give a date, I don't, I remember, but they are doing preparations for curbside, online ordering and curbside drop off and pickup.
I have to say, I'm, I'm tired of rereading the same three books, you know?
I could, I have some books, Rod, I'll give you some.
Thank you.
Okay, so can we move on now to reports on committee assignments and go around? Let's start with John this time.
None of my primary commission assignments had meetings this week, but I did attend the. Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting and also the Airport Commission Meeting. I'll let the primary members report on those.
Are you talking about the noise?
Yes, the airport noise.
Yes, the noise. Okay, great. Okay, Councilmember Chow, I know you had at least the.
Yes, I attended the airport noise meeting. And they are, because of COVID-19, counties, cities are cutting budget. And Santa Cruz County almost certainly will pull out because they, they have severe budget situation. So that means twenty-four percent of the funding for airport roundtable might be lost. So in the next meeting, they, they are asking us to ask all the council. What's the appetite to either increase the funding to cover the loss? Or we have to operate with whatever funding we have. I also took the time to look at the funding model by San Francisco Roundtable, Airport Roundtable. Their funding, I think about ninety percent is funded by San Francisco County. Through their airport commission. I think that kind, and the cities pay only eight, fifteen cities, eight pay like fourteen thousand, something like that. So their cities pay very little. I think that makes sense because the airport does make a lot of money for the county. And the county provides funding to, to the airport roundtable to help mitigate the impact of airport noise. Therefore, but we don't get any support from San Jose Airport. Or San Francisco Airport. I think probably there should be done, something should really be done to really, really advocate to them. You guys made, made the money, you have to fund us. Yeah. So, that's, and then another is the Legislative Review Committee. We had an emergency meeting today. With the mayor, so we adopted a position to oppose the governor's trailer bill. To take the money from the excess IRA fund. From the city, and not only that, they plan to take. Do it retroactively so that the funding that was already given to the city in the past two years would have to be returned back. And we might have to pay penalties for that because of certain difference in interpretation of the law. So we have written a letter, the, the mayor will be sending a letter to oppose that.
Yeah, already been sent. Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, Darcy.
I don't have any committee assignments that I attended that were scheduled over the time. I'm looking up some of my communications with the new county librarian, so that's probably a good report out. Jennifer Weeks from the current admin was appointed the county librarian. And I'm looking at one of her emails previously talking about what the next steps are going to be. Essentially, it is the same as what Deb said, that they're in constant evaluation of what services they can provide. And they are also encouraging us to look at the Santa Clara County Library District website. They put in a plug for a lot of the eBooks and the streaming materials, so a lot of those are available as well through the website. And if there are any other updates, I'll, I'll let you and the community know as well. Thanks.
Okay, Rod.
I, I reported last time on Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting that John referenced, so that was in, in, you know, early mid-May. The next one is next week. The only thing that I want to note is that. After many months. In fact, since the fall, we're gonna have our first. SR eighty-five Policy Advisory Board Meeting. In just under two weeks. It's coming up on the fifteenth. And this could be an important meeting at which we really talk about. And, and further limit the options. This has been a long process going three, four years. And finally, we seem to be getting to consensus on a, on a project and. I hope, I'm hopeful that we will be able to, the committee as a whole will be able to make a recommendation to the board. In the next few months and have it adopted as part of. This was commissioned at the same time as we were working on twenty sixteen, Measure B. There is a proposal with some renderings that the city has done, the city has done, Mountain View's done some others. That demonstrate how we view connecting to the infrastructure. For such a project, that is how local buses, via shuttles, Ubers, lifts, bikes and so forth connect. Unfortunately, because the, the owner of the Oaks has been so recalcitrant, that, you know, we're, we're not. It seems like we can't get his help to plan a transit hub connector there. So we'll probably have to pay ten times whatever it is we pay otherwise to try to do something on the overpass, which I think is. Really unfortunate. I wish we could reach some accommodation, but. As I say, that's, that's been a, a long struggle, so the best we've been able to come up with is. You know, a station, a connection point. By basically expanding the overpass, widening it to accommodate pickups, drop offs and the like. On a transit system that would run up eighty-five with a very few stops, but obviously the Enzo College is such a big transit user, we need one here. Thank you.
Okay, the only thing I really have is the West Valley Mayor's Meeting, which we had, and we had a presentation. By PG&E regarding. P S P S for next year or for this, this summer. Not really much information. They are going to try to do better in terms of. Shutting down smaller areas than in the past and do better at communications as to. Who will actually be affected by the shutdowns. Last year was kind of a, a mess with. People who would not be shut down being told they would be and vice versa, so hopefully. Hopefully we'll have some better, better communications this time. Interestingly, we had to do the meeting on Microsoft Teams because PG&E does not allow Zoom meetings. That's the first, first I had heard of that. Councilmember Chow also already talked about the L R C, so I won't talk about that again. And I think we are on to consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, not to interrupt, but your, your microphone is kind of fading in and out as well.
Oh, okay, let me unplug and plug back in. Is that any better?
Yes, way better.
Okay, so we're on to consent calendar. Let's see.
You're back down again. Wiggle the cable again.
Oh, you know what? I'll just use the microphone on the computer then.
Oh, my gosh, that's much better. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring the headset. Okay. We're on to consent. Did anybody want to pull anything from consent here? How many items? Hey, three minutes. Okay, if no one is wanting to pull anything from consent. We will entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Hey.
So I would move the consent calendar. That would be items four through sixteen.
Wonderful. I will second that. Can we have a roll call vote?
Member Chow.
Muted.
Yes. Hi, thanks.
Hi.
Councilmember Willie.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Hi.
Mayor Sharp.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. We're on to item seventeen, the update to the fiscal year twenty twenty-one City Work Program. So can we have our staff report?
Yes, I was going to share my screen, but it's not enabled, so I'll have to ask Katie, Katie to share her screen.
I'll come.
I have the same situation. We need IT to enable the screenshot.
Is there anyone from IT on here?
Yes.
I enable that, your co-host, and you should try it.
Okay.
Very good.
Hold on.
Want to switch the slideshow there?
I'm trying.
You went right by it.
Did I?
It's on the top, yeah. Keep going to the right, insert, and then it's like six over in a slideshow.
Six, oh, gotcha. Okay, here we go. So city staff will chime in when needed. What I want to do is focus this particular presentation on the twenty twenty-one City Work Program. So the first several slides, I am going to buzz through pretty quickly. This, as a reminder to council, is where we are. We have a little stopping point because of COVID. It disrupted our. Budget and work programming process. So we are right here where the yellow dot is, and you received the C I P study session earlier. Little bit of background, it was adopted on March thirty-first, subsequently revised in response to COVID impacts. And we have some delayed items in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty current work program. That were scheduled to complete before the end of June, but just got delayed because of our attention on COVID. So those items will continue and into twenty twenty-one and will be completed. And I'll just buzz through those hopefully quickly in the next several slides, just to refresh everybody on what they are. The public surveillance, installation of surveillance cameras. Public engage, I'm not going to read the slides to you, I'll just pick out the ones that I think are particularly interesting. There was a marketing project and the Fine Arts Commission just has not met, it got delayed. We did, we had a little workforce planning activity that was planned for F Y twenty this fiscal year. And it's delayed, but we'll, we'll, we'll finish it off. Art in Unexpected Places, again, with a delay of some of the commissions in April and May. This might be particularly interesting to people, the Lawn Buster Drought Tolerant Planting Pilot. We've de-scoped it a little bit and just tried to reduce costs and delaying contract and implementation. As you've seen with some of the same methods of, of our C I P projects. Community livability, we had a short talk on the short term rentals. It's ready to go. But because we were uncertain about the income that we would be able to bring in. To pick, to offset the cost for enforcement, we, we held it, it'll still get done. But it was ready probably two, two council meetings ago. I believe somebody earlier mentioned the Lawrence Midley property. It is now with the county. They've delayed the review of it, but it will progress. And of course, the discussion with the Parks and Rec Commission on the use of the athletic fields. Let's see, the Dark Sky Policy, Community Livability under the. Mixed Use Development Comparative Studies. Again, those are just delayed, they will get, they will get done. As we move into the, now the new work program. The staff and I have recommendations on what to either defer, delay or cancel, however you want. Not have it in this particular work program, some due to cuts. And just a sensitivity about every dollar, even though we're in pretty good shape. But just looking at those things as what is super necessary in the work program. This coming fiscal year, so starting in July, and that will be reflected in the June sixteenth presentation of the budget. One is, I can't get a lot of energy around the city seal and logo, while I don't like it, it's not that urgent. Housing strategies. Aside from that, that is updated to. Affordable housing strategies to include the density bonus ordinance update. Another set of recommended updates is the use of plastics, you know. To eliminate use of single-use plastics and put that on our business at this time. Might be a little bit of an economic burden, so we're suggesting we delay that. The Climate Action Adaptation Plan Updates. We can bring, you know, a little bit of a phased approach to that and bring a little bit of it in-house to try and manage the cost down. To the tune of about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in savings. Pilot on Trash Collection. We were, we recommend that this gets deferred. Financing Strategy, we've just updated to reflect different timelines. And then the Business Tax and Analyze Potential Revenue Measures, again. There doesn't seem to be an appetite for any type of taxes at this time. At least for this fall ballot, due to the economic impacts of COVID across everywhere, so. And since we, there's a little bit of savings there. Under Quality of Life, the continuity of operations, we're reflecting a lower budget. Due to a, apparently a successful contract negotiation. The Heart of the City Plan is recommended for removal. Or it can be deferred to future years. It'll be a lot of effort and quite a bit of money to do that. Review and Update General Plan Amuny Code, we know that this is important. But we've revised it, and we've, we've revised it to reflect the progress that the Planning Commission made. And what the staff has taken, has done, completed. The Valco Specific Plan, we're recommending a removal. That'll be another six hundred fifty thousand dollar savings. And that puts us right back into the next step. What I would say in closing too is that with these deferrals, delays or cuts, if you want to look at them that way. If you go back to the, the original budget presentation that council saw. Last time, this puts us in a little bit more conservative space than. Than Scenario B, I think it was, yeah, Scenario B. So now we're between Scenario B and Scenario C, and I think that's a pretty good spot to be in. If these reductions or deferments are all confirmed or approved by the City Council. And that's all I had.
Okay. So, refresh my memory about when you said removal of Heart of the City?
Just that we were supposed to update, so that item came into.
Oh, okay, removal of the update of Heart of the City. Okay.
Yeah, not the Heart of the City, forget it.
Right, right, you really scared me there.
No, no. No.
Okay.
We think, we think we can do most of what, what the council is concerned about with regards to objective standards, et cetera, through our general plan. what the council is concerned about with regards to objective standards, et cetera, through our general plan, objective standards that we're modifying currently.
Okay.
Now that you've mentioned Heart of the City, I'd like to clarify, because I was very surprised to learn yesterday that the Heart of the City update was added on our work program last year, but it has been on hold status for the whole year, so nothing was done. I didn't think that was the intention of us when we added that on work program, right?
If you recall, if you recall our meeting.
I'd like the council to see if that's what they had in mind.
Well, let me just put in another little factoid from the agenda review from yesterday. If I may, if I, and Ben, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the Heart of the City has been on a work program, but on hold for, how, how many years, Ben?
I believe it's been on hold for as long as I've been here, which is almost five years and perhaps even longer.
I have no idea why it was put on hold before, but the fact that the council kept that in our work program means we would like that to be worked on, so. How, why are we keeping an item and continue to say on hold? How come it wasn't removed?
It was added on to the.
Very surprising for me, and I'd like to ask my fellow council members who have been here longer, is that what they have intended? Maybe I just am not understanding the procedure.
Why don't you let Ben answer?
Sure, happy to, I believe this item was added as an active item this, beginning of this year. So it was reflecting on the upcoming fiscal year as an active item. It's always been on, on hold as an on hold item for, for future participation. So that's, that's, that's how it's always been.
No, it was added on in the last year's two thousand nineteen's work program. It was there already for a whole year, but it was on hold. So that's when I, when I asked what's the progress and there was none. So my question is, for my fellow council members who have been here longer, is that what they had expected from last year's work program, not this year? So you were expecting Heart of the City to be put on, but on hold, nothing would be done for last year?
Well, I, I, you were here last year as well, right? I mean, in terms of the Heart of the City question, can, can you repeat the question in terms of?
So we had a goal setting in the beginning of two thousand nineteen, I just got on. And so we have a prioritization session, right? Heart of the City was one of the item eventually we kept. And then I just found out yesterday that item was at, put on a status on hold for a whole year, since last, since it was put on in January two thousand nineteen. And then nothing has been done. Is that's expectation when we do put an item on the work program? Because it was on hold last year when we continued to keep it on the work program, we don't change the status.
Right, and wha- what I will say is that, you know, from, from my roughly five and a half years, our work program is getting more consistent with what we actually do over the course of the year. So, you, you know, when I joined in twenty fourteen, at the end of twenty fourteen, we would have an annual retreat and a session to talk about items, but we wouldn't have as detailed a list, broken down into these buckets in accordance to the various categories and departments and whatnot. And so, you know, I, I think your question, I think, gives a little bit of short shrift to the kind of evolutionary nature of that process and the improving nature of it. As to this particular one, Heart of the City, you know, I, I don't really have any kind of direct awareness of what happened to that agenda item over the course of last year and what the process was for identifying it to be kind of put on hold. But, you know, it's, it's a legitimate point, how do we go about doing that? And do we have a process if we don't? Perhaps it would be good, you know, for, you know, just discussion-oriented purposes as well as noticed in the public type of purposes to try to think about how we would improve that.
Okay. Yeah, and the staff is now suggesting to remove this item, so. To me, I think this is one of the important items, because we really need to set objective standards and there are a lot of assumptions made in this plan that that's at this, the discretion of the council to approve this exception, that exception. And when something is not specified right now, that means there is no standard. And, and it, this is long overdue to review this, to pluck those holes ever since SB thirty-five in two thousand seventeen, and now it's almost three years, so. I feel there is urgency to, to make the staff realize this is very important to the city. And, but then that's an item that somehow has been ignored or maybe miscommunication. Because I, it's my fault, I didn't notice the status is on hold in the last year's work program, I went to check, it does say on hold, it's my fault, I didn't check at that time that status is.
And my, my understanding is it came into fiscal year twen- last, this current fiscal year on hold, the same status as it had been for the last five years, so.
Yes, um.
That is the question, right, that is the question.
Maybe it shouldn't be, if it's a New Year's work program, the status should be reset next time. Don't, I don't, because council have a priority session to select each item. If the council selected, kept that item in the work program, the status should have been automatically set as active.
Well, hindsight.
Otherwise, you remove it, right?
Well, or it could be like many of the operational items that council still wants to track and you put it on there so you could keep track of it, knowing you couldn't work on it in the fiscal year nineteen twenty. I don't know, I wasn't here. But I can see that happening, because we have many of those similar discussions in our, in the goal setting for twenty twenty-one, right? You don't want to lose track of things, you want an operational item to be kept track of on the work program.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Not too, so I don't know.
Well, we, we are still, we're still putting objective standards with or without.
Correct.
Changing the Heart of the City.
Correct.
Yes, so we can merge them into the item, we are doing objective standards for general plan. Right, so that's just include the Heart of the City in that update.
Well, that's easier said than done, because it's a ton, it's a million dollars worth of work. So the question become, so the, the compromise position could be, we progress with the general plan, objective standards that have been ongoing, and we, staff can take a few things out of the speci- the Heart of the City and also do those too, but to revamp the entire Heart of the Cities, Heart of the City plan is a, a big effort, and so your current staff, there's just not enough people to do.
That piece, I think Heart of the City should take priority, because most of the development that we would expect are going to be streamlined in the Heart of the City. And if we don't update those standards as soon as possible, we will have no control.
So let me make one other suggestion also. I don't think any of us to want to waste any money either, particularly in this environment. And if, if in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we also have to identify, council has to identify housing elements, then I wonder if we're just gonna be undoing work that we've paid for in the Heart of the City.
No, no, um.
Housing element is different.
No, we, we have to, whe- whether we do the objective standards as part of Heart of the City or we set them separately, but they cover the areas in the Heart of the City, we, we still have to do them as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Ben, do you have some feedback about the, am I right about the housing element stuff?
Yeah, you are right on both points, Deb, and so I, I will suggest if, I, obviously staff understand that Heart of the City plan is, is a priority, it's, 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 so it's not, it's not a staff's intention to, to remove it altogether from, from, for future studies or we're ignoring it on per- for purpose. What we can do as part of objective standards effort, pick up little parts that we think that we can update and correct now without, with minimal impact to other sections of the code and general plans. That's, that's what the, the fear is, that when you start picking apart a, a, a large plan like that, bits and pieces, you might have some, some impact that we don't, we're not aware of, that may impact different sections of the code and general plans that we need to take a look at, we won't know until a project comes in, then we'll realize, oh shoot, you know, the other areas that we, we, we should have updated, but we can take a look at that as part of general, general plan update.
You know, SB thirty-five's not going away, we, and it's not the Sasquatch, the council fell down on the job by not establishing objective standards for the Valco property, but we, we need to be sure that that doesn't happen again before there's another SB thirty-five project that, that comes down, and we end up with, you know, another project that, you know, all the residents hate, but that we can't do anything about.
So is it possible, I think the last general plan update back two thousand, I think, on, to two thousand ten, the city formed a task force. I think in two thousand fifteen, also, we had a small committee of residents who are really interested in helping us to have tighter standards. They help us go through the standards, identify areas that we could. So it's planning commission, yes, but I think we can also recruit a task force of residents to help us go through them and identify face one, face two, kind of like what we did for objective standards. Let's pick out those obvious ones, fix them first, that's low ca- low cost. And then maybe it will, the staff, I know you guys are very busy, but maybe we can take advantage of community resources from the task force, maybe with two council members and the planning staff to go through this together, instead of having to bring to the council every time, would that save time? And also dollar with consultant and attorneys?
Honest question, honest answer, it's, it's probably not gonna save any time. But I don't know how much it will save in money if it's, if it's, I'll tell you what, we'll take a look at what the best approach might be, we've heard council that specific pla- or Heart of the City obviously is important, but the work that you want to do to adjust it is important, so we'll come back with some sort of approach on how we may marry that with some of the general plan, objective standards.
By the way, some cities, even in Saratoga, they have a standing general plan policy committee that go through it periodically.
Maybe I'll reach out to them, because I don't know how that's different than the planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, is that, Liang, is that a right, a committee of residents, or is that a?
It's a commission.
Oh, it's a separate commission?
A commission, separate from planning.
I see.
But it focuses just on general plan. Updates.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring back some sort of approach on how to do what's necessary on the Part of the City next year.
And, and I do recall many years ago, when I had first moved here, there was a citizens committee and they came up, they worked for months and months and came up with something great, and then some special interests didn't like it, and they insisted that a minority commission be formed to come up with a different set of GPAs and then adopted those, it was a, it was a real mess.
Okay, let's not do that again, then.
We got some really bad developments as a, as a result of that fiasco. But, so what, what do you need from us here tonight?
Do we have any comments?
I didn't see any, any hands raised, no.
So I, what I've heard from council then is, unless we need, unless you want all of council, I don't think everybody's had an opportunity to say anything. I've heard you on, on Heart of the City, I think we, we know what we need to do there. Everything else seems to be fine for either deferment or cut. Is that? That's what I'm hearing now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the cuts, you know, they're surgical and they're not, they're neither excessive nor too shallow.
Tried to strike a balance.
Yeah, I mean, it's sad that we have to do them, but I think we're being responsible by doing those cuts. But, yeah, if anyone else, I don't see any of the other council members raising their hand either, but certainly everybody's welcome to, welcome to speak on this. Oh, there goes Rod, okay, wel- welcome, Rod.
Oh, I wouldn't miss an opportunity, you know, I, I know we could spend a fair amount of money in a planning exercise with a lot of consultants, a lot of time, and I think, you know, what we really have to reflect on is how we prepare for this next cycle, we know we're gonna get a big green allocation. I think that's indisputable, and the question is, how do we, what do we do during that? The, the planning process that must take place, right, for our next cycle to enable housing in places where the council would prefer it, rather than everywhere? Because if our whole game here, right, is to minimize and stop and halt and downzone, and we spend a lot of planning dollars doing that, I can tell you what's gonna happen. We're gonna still have to plan for a damn big arena number. And our inability, right, to, we, we could end up spending a lot of money going through planning exercises just to, after, reverse all of it and more in a while. So I would encourage the council, to the extent that we want to do more planning out of cycle, to consider where you would like to enable the growth to occur, where you would like to put that housing, if that's, you know, that's the kind of productive and, and, and proactive planning that might actually help us get a leg up on the cycle, rather than having to just, you know, cre- create a setup where we're gonna, where we're going to be in a position to have to completely override, as, as John Willie often says, right? The, the, the plans we have, everybody's frustrated that our objective standards, you know, oaks, whatever it is, but we do, we have to have, I think, a thoughtful dialogue about where we want to enable the housing, rather than just what we want to prohibit, thank you.
Okay, John?
Okay, so, so I've looked at the, the updates and on the specifics, and then I'll come back with the more important one. So when I look at the public engagement, you know, I, I just really don't see, you know, the resident engagement item that, you know, I've been trying to get. It is true that the city manager put out a housing survey, handed got a lot of resident angst. To me, that's important information. If we didn't know that, we might have been marching down the road with those types of changes and things. We, we need the resident engagement so that they, they share with us what they're, they would want in the community, and we can share with them what we have to do for these green allocations and stuff, so that we can help them understand what has to be done, and then how they would prefer it to be done. Where's that resident engagement in this plan? If it's here someplace and I'm missing it, you know, then just alert me. I didn't see it under housing strategies, I'm not seeing it under public engagement. So, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that I'm not seeing that.
Are you talking about the housing survey, John?
That's a small portion of it, you know, resident engagement, which includes that, but that goes beyond that, I mean, we're here to serve the residents, but how do we know what the residents are and aren't concerned about, traffic, schools? What are the things that they would prefer over something else? And so we need, in my view, we really need a work plan item that is gonna be focused on the resident engagement. Well, yes, with a housing survey and then some other significant surveys, so that we have the, the input we need when we're making these decisions, whether it's green allocations or general plan updates and things of that nature.
So are you looking at the work, the twenty twenty-one original work program?
The, the update one. Twenty twenty one city work plan update red lines.
The big giant spreadsheet.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so I don't want to get wrapped around the axle. I, I'm kind of saying that, you know, I think we, I. If I'm only one out of five, then I can appreciate, okay, then I know it's not on here. But it's something that I truly think that, you know, that's our purpose for being, uh, on the city council. And then we go down the other ones. Uh. The general plan update seems to be under quality of life. Okay, the, uh. Uh, GPA, uh, process, uh. The heart of the city and that. You know, the G, general plan amendment process that was instituted by the last city council. That I think we need to really re-go back and revisit that. You know, that it's conveying to the developers out there. To come in and, and go through the gate and start doing general plan amendments as opposed to. Adhere to the general plan. That should be first and foremost on their mind. And then they come and say, you know what, I could do a, a little bit more here and give you this here. As opposed to it being a standard rule where they come in and say, hey, we want a general plan amendment. To, to go beyond the general plan. And so I'm concerned that, uh, I'm not really seeing that in here.
That's because your study session is coming up in a, in a near term.
Yeah, and so if, if that's truly going to handle it, uh, so then I come back to my biggest, uh, uh. Item and that is. I'd, I really would like to not go through an entire year without getting. You know, some, some updates and feeling that we made significant progress on the. Uh, work plan items that are of most importance to us. And so I put this out before we, it wasn't in the. Uh, staff report. And that is that, you know, take the top ten, let each councilman pick his top two passionate items. And that those are the top ten, those are the sacred cows that city staff is really going to work on. And for my two, it's resident engagement, which did include Valco, and I think it still should. You know, housing survey strategy, you know, uh, resident engagement is number one, and then the. General plan update, you know, the objective standards. Making sure that, that we have things very clear for these housing bills that are going to keep coming down. How can we go to the residents and say, oops, another one got through? And we don't have the objective, you know, objective standards. And so he got, got everything that the, the community was not liking. You know, we need to, to do that. So those are my two, two must haves for the, for the year. I'm appealing to the rest of the council to let's, you know, put out the top ten. You know, each councilman picked two and that we get a quarterly update on progress on those. Uh, uh, top ten. And I think there's going to be some, uh, overlap where councilmen will have the same item as, you know, there too. And so we wind up with six or seven or maybe eight. And I, I hope somebody else or, you know, a majority will say, yes, let's, let's make this a, a very. Uh, productive year in that regard that. We're going to see these things happen.
So Katie, are, are you prepared with that top ten list? We did, we did get the last two. It was today or late yesterday. And we should have an updated list.
Um, just to check, uh, city attorney, is this something we can share openly if it was gathered individually?
It's not, it's not.
I think what you're saying is that you, you have a list of, of items that council members would like to have. Report backs on. And yes, that should be an open discussion.
Yep. Great. Um, and so on that list, and some of these things are not work program items specifically. Um, they might be in the CIP, they're just priorities of council, but a lot of them do, of course, of the work program. Uh, so we have Regnar Creek Trail, City Hall. Resolving the golf course. Um, the gateway process. Uh, Valco engagement, um. Library expansion in Lawrence May. Uh, secondhand smoke and again, a couple more for Valco and the gateway process, um, setting objective standards. And accountability in the project approval process. And then I, and, and the density bonus ordinance, which is part of the work program.
So if I can just comment, again, I'm not seeing the resident engagement, you know, that is my, my number one item. Um, which does include the housing survey and stuff, so it's somehow it's, it's. Kind of hiding in something else. Like, okay, I could understand that, but, you know, resident engagement is, you know. If you need me to, to, uh, describe it in, you know, much more detail, I'm happy to do that. But, you know, I, I don't want to step on staff's toes, you know, res- resident engagement. And when I look down. Public engagement and transparency, you know, um, I only see one that's kind of even close and so.
Hey, John, so are you? Uh, you just closed your mic, but, um, just for clarification though, the housing survey. If you want to do one. Um, you would have to trade something else off the work program. It is a large item. Um, some of the feedback we got from that initial housing survey. Was people were fearful or concerned that, um, in an electronic format. People, number one, from Cupertino could fill it out. We wouldn't be able to stop them or. People who, um, had some specific view might have other people fill it out and basically, you know, stuff the ballot. So the only way to remedy that is to basically go to an all paper. Uh, survey, which theoretically we could and have it mailed as an example to. Um, every household or two, to every household for every adult or something like that and have them numbered somehow. So that's a large item. It will, um, I don't know how much it costs. We haven't estimated it yet. But you would need to get your council members to say that's what we need so that we can. Trade something out off the work program. And certainly. The, 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 uh, city staff can make recommendations of what we might trade out, but. Um, or options to trade out, but I, I'm just trying to make your request a little more specific.
Yep, well, you know, that's what I would like to have heard tonight, you know. Hey, you know, Councilman Willie wants this, uh, we gotta trade something else out. And so, yeah, if that's, yeah.
For the housing survey, I'm seeing that as a prelude for the housing element that would be. Helping us to collect information that we will need in one year for housing element, right? And I, and I actually took the time to go through the survey. I think I gave my comments, very detailed comments, item by item. The issue with that class survey is not how, it's not really how it's collected. It's how the questions are framed. And they are not, they are framed in a way that. Make, make people question what. Kind of. The, 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 the intent, the intent behind the question. A lot of times it's also because we didn't provide background information about what's already there and we are asking, how high do you want to go? And we are not telling people, here, this site is already zoned up to forty five feet. Right? So I think.
We're not here to really. The housing survey. Council thinks there should be a housing survey. Because it's a large item and there are concerns about, from everybody about access. I'll call it access. So.
We have how many items on housing strategies? I remember there were multiple items on that. On the work, current work program.
There, there are. Nine of them. I just checked. So on the, the large printout, there's total of nine. And to me, that's one of the, you know, a very important one. There's one on homelessness. Absolutely, that's important for us to be, for working on, but I think we really need our, our resident engagement, uh. To happen.
Okay, um, Darcy, do you have anything before I go?
Yeah, hold on. Um, so I've got. Some comments. Uh, on sustainability and fiscal strategy. So the first items that. Staff is recommending to reduce the scope of, uh, in, in that, the first two are the single use plastics ordinance. Um, and, and then, so my comment on that, I guess, is, um. You know, there are, there are some real fiscal realities right now. Uh, at the same time, we do need to be really cognizant about. The polluting impact of single use plastics on the environment. Um, I, you know, ultimately, we're probably going to have to strike, you know, a, a pragmatic balance. One thing, and I won't call anyone or any business out by name, but I'm noticing that. Um, there are actually usages of, of plastic bags now instead of paper, uh, in our jurisdiction. And I'm not saying that we should enforce, but I think we should be, uh, cognizant of some of the economic realities that are happening right now. And asking ourselves, what can we do to, you know, hopefully when we re-achieve, uh, some economic normalcy, uh, to start. Uh, approaching the businesses and essentially say, hey, look, what, what can we do to work with you to make sure that we're adhering to the existing ordinance? Um, you, you know, I, and I do appreciate the fact that staff has taken a, a lot of time and put good thought into. Uh, trying to identify those items that, you know, we can scale back on. Um. The second item in sustainability is where my other comments are. Uh, that's basically cap two point O, cap being. Our climate action plan. We, we passed a very good one. Uh, over the course of the years, uh, we've taken some really good strides in. Uh, carbon footprint related, um. Efforts in Cupertino, uh, and beyond. Um, I, I think that what I would like to put in a plug for, however. Uh, is the idea that some of the, um, lawn care emissions could be significantly reduced. There was actually a, um, uh, an email from the public. I won't name the person. I mean, it is a public document, but. Um, you know, I, but I will read a, just briefly, a couple of the paragraphs in his, you know, very thoughtful, lengthy email. Um, he states, I'm listening to my lawn service's stinky loud equipment and I found this initiative. He gives the website for agza.net, which is the American Green Zone Alliance. Uh, he says, it's a certification organization for using zero emission lawn care equipment. If I could hire an AGZA lawn care service, I would in a second. Sadly, there are none in Santa Clara County. So he goes on to talk about what we could be doing from a legislative and policy-based perspective to. Encourage this kind of certification in Santa Clara County. And I think that this is a very broad-reaching topic right now. Um, primarily because, you know, one aspect that people don't look at is, 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 is public health and people's. Um, native, uh, cardio pulmonary health, um, in, in various areas. So I, I, I think that if we were to focus on that, that could actually. Um, have really good ripple effects, especially given the fact that we don't have that kind of certification in our county right now. Uh, and we did have initially, um, the, the leaf blowing, uh, item that we did, uh, decide to take off. Uh, prior to this becoming final. But I think that from an environmental perspective. Uh, you know, this, this, this resident also points out that, hey, look, you know, one of these two-stroke engines, uh, on a leaf blower is producing. More pollution than ten Ford F one fifty pickups. Um, and also goes on to think about how we could perhaps do this in a more cost-effective manner. So I, I would just ask in my comment to have staff think about how we can keep cognizant of this issue. And hopefully keep it on, uh, perhaps not the front burner, but, uh, somewhere in our.
On a burner.
Well, on, on a burner, you know, something that, you know, we could be reminded at least to revisit in the upcoming. Uh, in, in the, in the, in the subsequent, uh, fiscal year. Um.
Yeah, and I think what you're.
I just want. It is still on the work program. Um, it's in. Uh, quality of life, air quality and noise on number three.
Oh, great. Um, so I'm, I'm sorry, Katie, can you, uh? Point that out again, the quality.
Quality of life, uh, number three.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so there's a study session on potential ordinance and updates on cleaning up. Uh, banning or, or, or banning gas powered leaf blowers. Perfect.
Right, I didn't think that was removed.
Okay, so, so I was looking under, um, the sustainability section. So, so that's great. So I would, let me, let me morph the comment to basically put in. That mention of the American Green Zone Alliance as a potential, uh, mechanism for, for policy. And being able to, um, you know, kind of expand out our, our impact. On, on how this is done in a stepwise and thoughtful manner. So, you know, it could affect other types of equipment as well. Uh, but I know that the way it looks, it looks very kind of isolated, uh, within a particular narrow, um, you know, scope. But in fact, it's actually a pretty significant thing that, uh, also implicates issues of, um, equity. Uh, a- and the fact that, you know, look, if you don't have leaf blowers that are affordable or really pragmatically useful. Um, because, you know, you could, a gas-powered leaf blower refill and use quickly as opposed to perhaps an electric leaf blower, which can't. Necessarily last the entire day. What do you do to kind of bridge that economic disconnect for the end user and the people that are affected? Um, so, so, so yes, I, I, I would really like us to think about this. Um, and I'm glad that it's still on under, uh, quality of life. Um, but it is on as a study session, so that's probably teed up even better. For a potential item, uh, that we would be looking at for, uh, potential, uh, for, for outreach, for actual outreach to the business community. Um, and some kind of an ordinance change.
And, and, and Darcy, I'll point out, many other cities have already done this. This is not. An impossible thing that.
Yeah.
Uh, for lawn maintenance companies when, when you no longer allow, um. Gasoline-powered two-stroke leaf blowers. We're not banning, we're not banning lawn mowers. We're not, you know, banning edgers. It's. It's just the leaf blowers. Are there even any four-stroke leaf blowers? I don't know. I mean.
Well, and so just to say that it's, it's on our list of, um.
Yeah.
Those we were updating, we had started. I don't know what the readiness is of it, but it's, it's definitely progressing slowly through, through the process. So just related to that, right?
Okay.
Okay.
And with, you know, just with the battery technology, you're absolutely right, Mayor. Uh, it is becoming a lot more practical to use these types of devices. Um, and I've seen them around. I, it's just, I, I, I'm not. Familiar directly with the relative cost differences as well as the, you know, pragmatic effectses. Uh, I mean, you know, if, if it's really, um, functional and it's not necessarily as long of a usage. Then perhaps, you know, the gap is simply a matter of being able to have a backup one, uh, and, and helping people out economically in, in any way that we can.
Well, I can tell you, as someone who owns an electric plug-in leaf blower, it's, they are fine for. You know, suburban tract homes, you know, they're not so fine if you've, if you're doing commercial, um. Landscaping and I, or, you know, governmental, I think Roger Lee mentioned this, say, you know, it would be difficult for public works. That are maintaining these huge fields, um, to deal with the electric leaf blowers, um.
Right, well, well, and, and, you know, let's, let me just finish by, by saying this, you know. One last point, you know, leaf blowers are much more economically, um. You know, achievable than say, uh, refitting the entirety of your, uh, diesel or other gas-powered, uh, vehicle fleet. So I, I mean, I, I think this is actually something that kind of keeps us in that, uh, mode of thinking, uh, as well. So if we can, if we can do this well, you know, throughout, not just with regard to the environmental issues, but with regard to the economic equities of it. Um, then I, I think it, it allows us more of a runway to get back to the book. Because in California, it looks like there probably are going to be some considerable amounts of retrenchment for the. Um, the, the transition into large electric vehicles. Um, and, and so if, if there's anything that we can be doing that is less economically intensive, especially. You know, i- i- I think it makes sense as the transitional i- idea to, to keep us in the game, so to speak.
Okay. Um, let's see, who hasn't called yet? Rod, did you have anything?
No, I thi- I think I shared a little, uh.
Okay.
Earlier about.
Well, I can't remember who went anymore. It's been so.
Using pla- using our planning, limited planning dollars, uh, efficiently. Using plant, using our planning, limited planning dollars efficiently, so.
So, yeah, my comments, I guess, are, you know, this is the time we really, you know, we heard it in public comment. The residents are expecting us to be prudent financially and not suddenly put very expensive new things on the work program. I think the resident outreach that the Vice Mayor has done with her coffee talks has been excellent. And, you know, very, very, very low cost to the city. I mean, even lower and even lower when it's on a Zoom meeting because we don't have to buy anybody coffee.
Just to clarify, you're talking about Councilmember Chow, she was Vice Mayor last year.
Sorry, oh, right, okay, sorry.
Actually, some people are requesting a lunchtime one, so maybe you can start a vice.
Right, yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to do that, but I think, you know, as we do resident engage, resident engagement, we have to be mindful that we do, you know, the residents are expecting us to spend their tax money wisely and, you know, we are not, I don't think there's an appetite by any of us to start hiring more full-time employees to implement some kind of vast new program. I think we can do surveys inexpensively and, and the coffee talks and town halls inexpensively. But, I mean, I, I don't want to start hiring, you know, I certainly would not vote to hire more staff just to do that. You know, the residents are free to express themselves at, at our meetings, and they often do. The concern I have is that, and it's hard to get around this, the people that are interested are the ones that are responding, the people, you don't really know what, what your neighbors who never, you know, have any interest in city politics are thinking. And that kind of engagement, how do you get to them in some random way? And, yeah, I, I don't have the answer to that. John, maybe you have an answer to that, since this has been your, you know, your issues, you know, so much.
Oh, I definitely have input, you know, I'm, I'm not wanting to hog up a lot of time, but I, I don't see this as being a consultant activity. I think that it was very evident when the survey went out with a, putting it on Facebook where, you know, people in, in Russia can take it and interfere with our local engagement process. I mean, I, I don't think it has to be done on paper. I think every household gets two access codes and they log in and put in their access code and they put their input. And so it's really just a matter of creating the questions in a way that allows them to answer in what they feel is what is right. And I don't see that as being a big dollar item, but I don't see it being done. And so I think it needs to be on a work plan item with a quarterly update. And how did it go? What did we learn? We need to, we learned stuff about the questions, we need to change them. And, you know, get this input, make it, we've got Apple, you know, in our community and they're state-of-the-art. They're where everybody follows. And yet, we can do the same thing with how we interact with our, our community and, and make good decisions for them and let, let the, the other communities around here look at us and say, geez, we want to be like Cupertino. We want our residents to feel that they are being heard, that, that the decisions are being made with respect to what the the majority of residents want. And so I'm disappointed that it's not on the, on the item.
And I think it's important, especially now we are, can do a lot of things online, that we haven't been doing a lot of surveys. There are other type of online tools to get more resident engagement, exchange of information. We haven't done those. And as I understand, John actually has a template of the survey questions that he has worked on for quite some time, since last year, and he has given it to the residents to review. And Deb already has a set of questions that are already prepared. So I wonder if, I would like to know if we schedule this item, which department it will belong to? How many staff hours we would expect to be spent on that? Would we need to hire a consultant or this can be done in-house? And what, how much effort is there? Because this also gives us information to prepare for housing element, which we will have to start in 2021, right? So the effort is not wasted. We'll have more information to help us make decision early on for the next housing sector. So can we get an estimate of?
Mayor and City Manager, if I may make an attempt to respond to start that conversation. I believe Councilmember Chow, part of the question was, who, who will be responsible for this item if it would be proposed? It would be the Community Development Department, but falling within the Housing Division, which right now we have one staff member. And, and in order to achieve all the stuff that you have seen in the past that we brought forward to you regarding housing, we had to kind of utilize our, the Planning Division, which has, has only seven planners. So our resources are a little tight in terms of those two divisions combined. We can certainly take a look at this, this item and see how we can do as much of it in-house or, but, but again, the idea is trying to.
Yeah, I know she has her head full.
Yeah, and, and the idea really is trying to be as transparent and helpful as possible, so we can utilize that data for the housing element when it comes around. We're not, but that is coming around next year, when there's an opportunity that we can look at this in the next, next, next fiscal year, when, when we have gone past this COVID-19 situation. But if, if the desire is to place on this, this fiscal year, we, we, we need to look at somebody's housing. A number of those items, we've already started working on, so I, I would hesitate in stopping.
So one point, last year, one, one item on the council agenda was to have commission, look at what commissions we, we might need. One idea was Community Engagement Commission, that I was hoping a commission could help do this kind of thing, design surveys. And then that maybe a few commissioners can help work out of that.
I mean, designing a survey is like a whole, designing a survey is like a whole occupation, like, it's not like everybody can just do it. It's, it's.
Okay, then in terms of timing, if we do it starting from next fiscal year, that will start from July 2021. But as I understand, housing element has to be adopted in the year of 2022, right? Because it starts on 23. So that means we won't start, we will start designing survey in Ju- Ju- July of 2021. By the time we finish designing, housing element would already be started. We will be too late for housing element. Then what's the point of doing the survey?
That, that's a good point, but, but there lies our, our issue here, right? We just mentioned we have one housing staff.
So, so what kind of budget are you looking for? I mean, is it another full-time employee? I mean, I know it's not just, it's not just employee time, it's like, you know, I was thinking, you know, when this last survey went out, I was thinking, well, wow, how do we get, how would we get codes out to everyone? I thought, well, you put them in the, you know, every scene, but you can't actually do that. You have to send them out first class to each specific address. Every time you send that out to every household, you're talking another $10,000 just in postage. It's, you know, this is not something that's free. And, you know, my feeling is, you know, some of the things that, where we really get good feedback, the coffee talks and, and people that comment on agenda items.
Estimate how much, if the consultant does it, how much it will be?
I, I don't have that number for you. We, we can take a look at that. I mean, this, if we're looking at the level that, that Councilmember Willie is looking at, basically as a full transparency into neighborhood type of outreach, we're looking at workshops, we're looking at those, those level of sort of in, into the roots of community involvement. So that will take some time and cost. I don't have those numbers right now.
John is not talking about workshops.
No, I'm not, I'm just saying in terms of.
Company the survey. Send the survey out, right?
And he already has a base. So the company has something to start with and tailor it to a more professional way. And then they have, we have tools to collect all the data already. So I'm wondering.
I, I, I would go ahead and.
To do it.
You know.
They're not starting from scratch, right?
I, I also, you know, I don't think we need to go into the detail, you know, should it be on the work plan or not? But I will respond to, you know, Mayor Sharp and, you know, the $10,000. Once you've given two codes to every household, you're done. You can have a survey every month and that resident can log into the new survey and the new survey and the new survey, and he's got a code. He's got his access code. People in Russia do not have access codes. So all you need to do is let the residents know that, gee whiz, now there is a homeless survey. You know, give us your feedback, you know, do you want us to work on creating a, a location for homeless? Do you want us to try and come up with trailers for homeless? What are the policies you want? I mean, it's endless, you know, traffic congestion, wow, you know, they've got their code, they can enter and give us their feedback. Other people can take the survey without the code. And we know what the residents of Cupertino are telling us, and we see the other inputs that come from other, other individuals. So I, you know, I keep hearing complex, complex. I don't see it as being that big of an issue.
So we have two votes to consider this as a potential item. And can we at least put some thought into it?
Also, what you want to take off the work plan.
I will, I need to see how, how much effort it is, right? I don't know. And, okay, actually, I have, actually, I haven't gone through my list. I jumped in on Heart of the City because the mayor mentioned it. So, um, so John mentioned the top two list that she's, he's hoping the city attorney would collect, and Katie reads through the list. And the idea is.
Why is the city attorney collecting the top?
Oh, no, I see attorney, Katie, Katie. Yeah, so the idea is to get quarterly update. I think we need quarterly update on all projects. So when we have a budget meeting, it will be nice to have the work program, and here is update on all the items. But it's good to identify the top 10 so that we won't have miscommunication again that the council actually valued these items and the staff didn't know. And then somehow there are so many items, so staff work on whatever they might have a capacity for at the time. So I think it's beneficial to identify top 10 that we know these are top 10 we want to get finished this year.
Okay, we have them.
So that's good. But I still hope to get updates on all projects quarterly. So that we have some idea how it's going.
Okay, because this item is taking quite a bit of time, so.
So let me go through my list. So one of my items that is kind of should be on the work program, but it's not because the description is not exactly what I had in mind. I think it was development accountability was mentioned in the last priority agendas goal setting in 2019 already. And then it's mentioned again in this year's goal setting. But development accountability now, as it appears in the work program, talks about accountability for the, for the project applicant to implement the project. How do we put in conditions approval or other things to make sure that they actually build the project? That is important. But by development accountability, when the council proposed it last year and this year, what I had in mind was the approval process, the accountability for the approval process. As we have seen that the recent change is in the state law, especially we have seen in the SB 35 lawsuit. Of staff, once they approve a project, it doesn't matter if the project is complying to the, to our city code or not. It will be deemed approved, even if some mistake were accidentally made. May even general plan amendment will be allowed as long as time has passed. No one can even challenge the legality of the project. So we need accountability throughout the approval process so that there is no accidental mistake. That, that was the intention of that. So I hope that development accountability does not only include accountability of the developers, but accountability of our approval process.
I, I would agree with that 100% and, you know, as long as, you know, any, any projects that are taking advantage of special situations, asking for, you know, SB 35s or whatever the case may be, that it's got to have very, very critical checks done and making sure that stuff is not missed, so.
Yeah, I think we need early notification if there is any request for exception, waiver concession, so that the public know that, okay, this project requests that. We can help check if, if the compliance is really there. And I'd like to point out, Councilmember Rod mentioned, there seems to be a misconception that adopting objective standards somehow is trying to hinder development. It is not. The city, it's our responsibility as city council members to adopt standards for our city. But now, because the state law only respects objective standards, when we have standards that say fit within the neighborhood or gradual transition into the neighbor, those standards now is our, is meaningless. They don't exist. It's as if we didn't write it. That's the law right now. Then, but then there are other cities, for example, in San Martell, they define specific numerical standard. What does that mean when you gradually transform to the next, to fit in your neighborhood? That's the kind of standard. We are actually helping for the, for project applicant to know exactly what we mean. That help with development process, so there's no vagueness in it. That helps with a streamlined project, but even discretionary project would know that, okay, as long as I do this, that's what the city means. Okay, so that's not about hindrance to housing.
But you have your objective standards items in the work program, so can we?
Yeah, that's, but I want to clarify this misconception. Somehow we are doing this to hinder housing.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Chow. When we look at what we did at the Daco property, you know, they got the RINA allocation. We did, after HCD contacted us, we did the rezoning of sufficient area for the number of housing units. But what we didn't do, but we had a chance to and failed to, was the objective standards that would have stopped these 22 or however many story towers that are part of the SB 35 plan. We, you know, we weren't trying to stop housing. We, that's a housing element site that we, you know, really should have had that housing built already, and, and we don't. Because, you know, they look, oh, look, there's no objective standards, we can do whatever we want, and we really need to ensure that that doesn't happen again.
Like, for example, Heart of the City, right now, the, the current, there is a, the current proposal is saying that, oh, there is no setback standard between buildings because Heart of City says that the approved project will determine that. Because the project is being approved, that means there is no standard, so they can actually have zero setback. I think that's not the intention of the person writing the code. The intention was the council get to decide, or that it should be reasonable. But because it's not mentioned, now it's as if there's no standard. That's, that's, we have to fix, okay? So in the, among the removed project, there is, there are three items that's. So uh in the, among the removed project, there is, there are three items that's T P D to be decided. Art in unexpected places and the marketing project. Both of these projects are under art commission. They, I, as the Chair of Art Commission, they haven't had any meeting during S I P. I'm not sure why, um.
Because I think they defined, they defined under the S I P, they defined it as art is really not essential, right?
That's fine, but then the other delayed items have a date that they are six months delayed, they are three months delayed, but these two are to be D. So are we not going to do those at all?
No, we are. All those items listed under nineteen twenty, as I had said, will finish. They just not delayed.
No, my point is the others have a date. These two are have to T P D.
We will determine them with the Fine Arts Commission. I mean, they'll get done.
Want to, because this doesn't take much resource, right? I don't want that become then removed somehow because it's not clear. Okay. And then short-term rental is also T P D. That I know is almost done.
It is ready, ready.
I understand that this is may not be the best time to do it, but since it's already done.
Just know.
They would delay back here.
So just, do you notice the nuance there? In when you enact the S T R got uh Muni Code, the enforcement is paid for by the fees you would collect. We're, we don't think we're going to collect any fees.
So.
Going to have costs.
Adopted and then uh waive or postpone, enact it in a year later so that we at least have it in place.
Katie, I don't know.
Then we don't have to restart the whole process.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can have the ordinance effective it at a future date. Um, we're working with where options are on that, trying to be as flexible as possible, only because we have to determine what the fee would be to offset uh the costs. And to do that effectively, we kind of need to know what the market looks like and how many S T Rs are out there. Um, so we we are, we can do that. We can bring the.
Can we enact, can we adopt it and then enact a year later and then at that time set the fee?
Yeah, we just need to set the fee sixty days before.
Oh, so we can adopt it and then enact it a year later or until the the situation is uh feasible, then we set the fee then, and then you get enacted, right?
Correct, as long as the fee schedule is updated sixty days prior to the effective.
Does it make more sense to just do that, get this done?
He's working on the plan, so yes.
Okay.
Already done.
Okay, I agree with Darcy that single-use plastic. I, our project is, program is too full, but I also think single-use plastic uh um there are a lot of them that could be avoided. If we, if it might be economical impact to the business, can we possibly make that uh?
Their cost.
Not enforceable. I mean, we don't enforce it, but we encourage it. Or or some.
I mean, right now, he, um Darcy, I think, mentioned the um like plastic bags being used. That is uh definitely an effect of S I P because COVID, they don't want to use paper, they don't want you to use reuse your grocery bags. That's why they're issuing the plastic. That's temporary. So I'm less concerned about that, and I think I see Vice Mayor nodding his head. Um, but the single-use plastic, you know, like other things, um but I don't know, Ursula's on here, she can probably answer.
I know there are a lot of takeouts. People are doing, and even I do a lot of takeouts, so a lot of single-use plastic.
Yeah.
And in Taiwan, almost everything is paper. There are paper products that you can use. And I don't know how much more costly it is, maybe it's not much more, but if we have some kind of ordinance, we can encourage that use and we can help educate the business that here is the other alternative. It's not much more expensive, but it's more environmental friendly, so.
It's gonna be expensive to the business. That's what we're worried about.
And it's my understanding that there is ordinances that are working through the county, and so we we're going to be paying close attention.
Yeah, that's true. There is, I think.
And we're gonna be learning, yeah, and we'll be learning uh with with what they're doing so that as we do bring forth a a schedule in Cupertino, it's been, it's been tested.
Hmm, okay, so I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, so um if we can move on from the work program item.
Um. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I had to step out for one second. Um, so what do you need from us here to um just adopt the uh updated work program?
Yes, we've heard, we've heard, I, we took notes on um council's direction. Um, and I heard from two of you on the housing survey, but I feel like we need more clarity. It sounds like Councilmember Chow can, needs a little more information on effort, the amount of the effort it takes, cost or whatever, resources, so we can get that back um. And then we'll we'll bring that back to council at some point.
Right, um. Yeah, that that's good. And you know, just a method of um implementing the survey, so you know, it's it's only, you know, residents that are filling it out and taking into account people leave the city, people come in, and we you're gonna have to keep updating that. Um.
I mean, alternatively, to try and meet um Councilman Willie's efforts, his thinking, we could offer some, in the coming fiscal year, we could offer some education and then some town halls to try and collect input, but we'll we'll um figure out what the size of that.
Yeah, it's my preference to, you know, can carefully in these times, look after our constituents, um tax dollars and not spend not spend even, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on this kind of thing.
So I think how we can do it, but also keep in mind of the timeline for housing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Always that information.
Always.
Way, so it might be helpful um when, yeah.
Yeah, but 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 I want to point out that sir, doing these surveys that way or not, we will still get input from you know, the residents in the city on um how they feel about, you know, the different possible housing element sites. There's, you know, like I said before, you know, you have the town halls, you have the coffee talks, we can have other talks, you know, let's just be fiscally responsible here.
Okay, so um yes, we would like you to um accept uh the proposal.
Okay, okay, so I will make a motion to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one city work program.
And I'll second that.
Wait, so can we modify to um, are we are we are amending, right? The Heart of the City now, right now, is listed as removed.
We agreed that we would look at Heart of the City items along with our general plan objective standards.
So either merge the ways that general plan, right?
Yes.
I want to clarify.
Those items that are urgent in Heart of the City.
Yeah, and then.
I'd like uh, I'd like to see it come back to us after all our inputs are incorporated. I mean.
I need you to adopt this, though, to be able to inform the budget next time.
Yeah, I think that objective standard talk the last time was so over six months ago. I think we really need to speed that up.
Yeah.
How we can do that, um, let's talk about that. And another thing is the development accountability that I'd like to clarify that it should include also accountability for the approval.
We have it. I already took notes. We have it.
Um.
Okay, there's a motion.
So the motion includes everything we talked about.
Yes, we've captured it.
There's a motion in a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
No, I want to see you come back.
Okay.
Updated.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries with Willie voting no.
Okay, um, you know, we've been going for three hours now. This took way longer than uh it should have. But let's reconvene at ten P M. Uh, take a bathroom break. Thank you.